I'd like to call to order the special board meeting in the Village of Westmont for our budget workshop fiscal year 2016-17, and I'd ask Clerk Simmsky for a roll call, please.
Mayor Gunther.
Here.
And the clerks here, Trustee Addington.
Here.
Trustee Barker.
Here.
Trustee Barry is absent. Trustee Guzzo.
Here.
Trustee Little.
Here.
Trustee Nero.
Here.
Manager May.
Here.
Finance Director Parker.
Here.
And there are a lot of our staff here that people will meet tonight as they -- I'm not going to name everybody because we could be here for days.
Would everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. This is our annual budget workshop. We're going to have the staff make presentations. It is open to the public. We'll give anybody who has a question the opportunity at a certain point during each section to open it up if anybody has a question. On the way they're doing the budget presentation, they're going to view it from 50,000 feet and keep getting closer down. So after we get through each little section, we'll open it up. If anybody has any questions at that time, including board members, we'll ask them. So at this point, I think I'm turning it over to Financial -- Finance Director Parker.
Right, thank you. As the mayor indicated, we're going to kind of take a big picture view and then narrow it down progressively during each section. So I think most of you probably have a document that's viewing on the screen right now, so you'll be able to view this on the screen. I think many of you have access to this on computers or Chromebooks. For those individuals, it's in the Budget Workshop directory, and we're starting with the document that's labeled A-01, so if you're sorted by name, it should be the first one up there. For those who are using the paper copy, there's a paper copy that shows the same information sort of as our overview, kind of a map as to what we're going to be looking at tonight. So I want to start off by talking a little bit about the budget process. And the budget process is, if you happen to have a paper copy, it's the first page there. If you're looking on the computer, it's the one that's labeled A-01 2016-17 Budget Timeline. You could also be able to see it on the screen. So the one thing I want to start by pointing out is the way the budget works is it's a process that we start. It goes for several months and involves a lot of different people doing a lot of different things. This year, it started with the board reviewing the strategic plan, and as you'll recall, in prior years, we had a special board budget meeting at the beginning of the process around November, December. This year, because we were focusing on the strategic plan, that was the initial contribution of what the board did. And then based on that, departments prepared their budgets. We're hopeful that next year, we can have even more of an impact of the strategic plan in the budget process. As you're aware, we've got the strategic plan. We have a recently formed Strategic Plan Implementation Committee who's going to be looking into helping us implement it, and we'll be able to take that and do a lot more with it next year in the budget. But you'll be able to see as we go through the budget that we've still tried to apply the principles from the strategic plan and include some of the things from the strategic plan in the budget. So then the departments worked on preparing the budget, and that's a process that involves a lot of time and a lot of effort by all the different members of the department. So the members of departments submit ideas, come up with ways to save money, come up with things to help improve efficiencies, and ideas of things that would help be able to serve the residents better. And through a lot of work from the department heads and everyone within the departments, they've prepared a great budget. They've met with finance, with the manager. And then one of the things that we did a little bit differently this year was that throughout the process, as we were getting closer to the budget, so in January, February, and March, the village board had a lot of discussions about items that would appear in the budget at their committee meetings. So the Public Safety Committee talked about items that were -- you'll be seeing in the fire department budget. The Administration Committee talked about items you'll be seeing in the Administration Department's budget. So there were a lot of pre-budget workshops or mini-budget workshops, if you will, during the committees. And again, that was a lot of effort and work by the departments as well as by the village board, and so thank you to all of you for all the work you've done, and thank you to everyone for all the work they've done up to tonight and then for all the work you're going to be doing tonight as we go through the budget. As you can see, we're at the point in time where we're having a budget workshop, and then we're hoping for the budget will be up for approval and looking for approval at the next board meeting. So that's kind of the budget process in a nutshell, and so what we're going to do tonight is to get a little bit more in-depth, kind of a 101 on budgets and funds. And for many of you, this will be a review. For some people, it might be some new information. So we'll walk through a little bit about how funds work and how we structure funds, and when we talk about funds, what those refer to. So for people using the paper copy, we're now on page two. For those using the electronic version, we're on the sheet labeled A-03. For people that are looking at the screen, it's up there on the screen. So in government accounting, things are divided up into funds, which in terms of accounting function almost as if they're separate companies. And they're ones where in order to move money, some of the money can be moved from fund to fund if you do specific transfers. Other money can only be used for some specific funds. So I want to walk through the different funds that we have as a village and how we use them. So the first type of fund is called major governmental funds, and our major governmental fund is the general fund. And as we'll refer to it today, it includes two funds, Fund 01, the general fund, and our excess fund balance fund, which is Fund 68. This is the major operating account where most of the things you think of as the typical services provided by the village come from. This is where we cover our police, our fire, our public works, the contributions we make to Page Senior Citizens Council, to Page Children. So a lot of the contributions we make, a lot of the things we do, come from this general fund. That's our operating fund. This is the fund that is where we get our money to use on an ongoing basis, and then we use it to -- it's sort of like our checking account if we used our checking account for our regular living from month to month. The next kind of funds are specific funds that are used for specific purposes. Our convention tourism fund is the account that has hotel motel taxes. This can only be used for things that promote convention or tourism, that bring people to the community. We have a downtown parking fund. This accumulates funds, and it's set aside to help cover costs with the downtown parking. This is something we started setting aside a few years ago. It's slowly growing, but there's not enough in there yet to do anything with it, so as you'll see this year as in prior years, it's just accumulating balances slowly. Our next fund that's listed is the vehicle replacement fund, and this is the fund that we use to cover replacing vehicles. So what we do, and we started this several years ago, where we start setting aside money each year. So each year, we take money from the general fund and transfer it to the vehicle replacement fund to be able to forward fund our vehicles. So for example, rather than having to come up with the money to buy a new fire truck all in one year, we set aside a little bit of money each year so that by the time the truck is old and needs to be replaced, we have the money in the vehicle replacement fund to pay for it. So in any given year, the amount of money going out of the fund doesn't necessarily tie to the amount of money coming into the fund. Each year, we put money into the fund in such an amount that by the time the vehicles are up for replacement, we're able to replace them without a problem. There's other methods to do it, and you know, at one point in time, we used to do leases where we would pay a specific amount each month to cover the vehicle, or each year to cover the vehicle, but the problem was then we were paying the interest to somebody else. Whereas this forward-funded method, we were able to earn at least a little bit of interest as we're saving the money to use for future vehicle purchases. Our capital projects funds are for capital expenditures, so large-ticket items, infrastructure items that are used for -- to cover those large-ticket items that we're able to do. This is more like a savings account where you put money into it when you have some extra money, and when you need to use it, you have it there to be able to use to do big things that may come due. So in this account, you'll see we've got lots of building improvements as well as lots of infrastructure items such as roads, improvements. The next two bonds, the next two funds are listed together as the Bond 2013A and 2013B Bonds. These are bonds that we entered, that we issued in 2013, and the MFT bond was used for road resurfacing, and the non-MFT bond was used for any other infrastructure that we wanted to use it for. The majority of that bond has been used for stormwater purposes. You will see as we get to these funds that this year, all of the money, so we're now in the third year with the bond, which means we need to finish spending the money that we got from the bond proceeds. So as we get to those funds, you'll see that all of the expenses now will reduce the fund balance, so they'll be sitting at zero, which is what we were planning on doing, what we needed to do. The next fund, the Stormwater Infrastructure Fund, is a fund that provides for stormwater or other infrastructure projects. Right now, the board has pretty much set aside this fund as specifically for stormwater. As you'll recall, this is the fund that we set up after the public-approved referendum, a sales tax increase to be able to fund stormwater and infrastructure. So you'll see some of those projects coming out of this fund. The next fund that's listed is our bond debt service. So this is where we pay for any debt that we have, so we'll transfer money from a variety of different sources to fund those, the debt that we have to pay back. We have our motor fuel tax fund. This is a fund that's used, and we receive money from the state. So for every time a gallon of gasoline is sold in the state, there's a tax added on to it, and then the state takes that money and remits it to municipalities based on population. And so we receive that money. We're only able to use that for road-related items. So as you'll see in there, we'll be transferring money to pay for the bonds that we just talked about for the road resurfacing as well as some other road infrastructure project. We have our IMRF and Social Security Fund. These are used to cover employer contributions for Social Security and Medicare as well as our IMRF contributions. This money can only be used for these items. The revenue comes from property taxes, which is specifically designated for those purposes. We've got our two TIF funds, and that generates money there. As you'll recall, these are things we set up a couple of years ago where there's two different TIFs. One's in the southwest Westmont Business District, the other one's in the central Business District. And the southwest Westmont Business District is located around 63rd. The central Business District is right in the downtown. And these TIFs are, the way they're structured is that as property values increase as a result of the TIF, we're able to use the additional property tax that's generated on that incremental increase to put back into the TIF project to be able to improve infrastructure and to be able to attract other people to come to the TIF. So you'll see those funds there. We also have our water fund. This is what's called a proprietary fund. This fund works more like a business and is treated separately as if it's its own business, so that the money we earn on the water fees can only be used to cover water type of expenses. And it's one of the funds that should be breaking even so that the money that it takes in covers the amount that it needs to spend for its infrastructure needs as well as its ongoing operating costs. We also have another fund. You're not going to see it referenced because we don't have any expenditures out of it, but that's the Employee Benefits Sick Time Fund. It's an internal service fund that's used to account for a liability, but because we don't actually have any expenditures, you're not going to see it in the rest of the presentations. So that kind of goes over the fund structure. Let me give you a little bit of a overview on kind of the way that funds work and the way budgets work in funds. So for those on the electronic version, we're now on A-04, Funds and Budgets Overview. For those in the paper packet, we're now moving on to page three. So this is just a general overview of the way that budgets work and how they deal with funds and fund balance. So as you can see on the next page, on page four, there's a picture that shows all the different pieces of the budgets. We've got the revenues, which are money coming in. We've got expenses, which are money that go out. We've got transfers where we send money from one fund to another fund. And then we've got fund balance, which is sort of what's left over. If we have money left over, if our revenues are greater than our expenses or our transfers, we have a surplus, and that goes to increase our fund balance. If our expenses and transfers are less than our revenues, we have what's called a deficit where money has to come out of our fund balance to cover our costs for that year. Fund balance is composed of a few different pieces. We've got our reserve, which is something that we establish to say we want to make sure we keep a certain amount of money in the fund each year so that we've always got that in case anything happens. If we have a shortfall of revenue, if we have trouble getting money from the state for a period of time or something, we've got something that we've got to have money in the bank to cover our costs. Then we've got carryovers, which are items that we budgeted for in the prior year but have not, did not actually get a chance to spend. This year, as many of you are aware, we've been holding the line. We've been a little bit concerned and wondering what's going to be happening with the state, and so because of that, there were lots of larger items that we approved in the budget last year but have not actually started doing. And so those items were, are held over as a carryover, so it's money that we still have in the fund balance that we'd already committed previously, and we're going to be spending it this year. And then on top of that, we have excess fund balance. So that occurs if there's that surplus. So if, when revenues come in higher than we anticipate, or expenses are a little bit less than we anticipate, and we have a surplus in prior years, that generates some excess fund balance, which we can then use in the future years. However, when we're talking about using fund balance, we have to be careful how we use it. The big key is that operating expenses should be covered by ongoing revenues. We don't want to have a situation where we say, oh, we meant to do a project last year. We have an extra $10,000. Let's start a new program that's going to cost us $10,000 each year because we don't have $10,000 each year. In that situation, all we have is one time of $10,000, so we would use that to cover one-time expenses. So you'd use the carryovers to cover the carryovers, and then you would use any excess fund balance you have to carry one-time expenses. So some examples of one-time expenses that you'll see in this budget are cutting down trees as a result of the Emerald Dashboard. That's something that doesn't happen all the time. It's not a new program we're doing, so it's a great example of something to be able to use our excess fund balance to cover. We also have situations where we're using a lot of carryover and excess fund balance to cover projects. There's a lot of times where we start establishing, we set aside money for a project as we start a project. We want to make sure that we have the money set aside to be able to cover that so we don't end up committing the money a second time. So you'll see that especially in our motor fuel tax and our capital fund, our stormwater funds, where we're pulling money from either our excess surplus or our carryovers where revenues exceed expenses, just like in a savings account where somebody would have, you know, if you're putting in a couple hundred dollars a month in your savings account, but you need to take the money out to buy a new washer, obviously, in the month you do that, you're going to have a much higher expense than you have income, but as long as you have the balances there, then you're okay for those kind of funds. I want to talk a little bit about the relationship between our general and our Fund 68, which is our excess balance. I think for those of you looking on the screen, it might be a little hard to tell, but the fund over on the right-hand side is the general fund, and the one on the left-hand side is Fund 68. So what we have is we have the revenues come in and then expenditures. If we have any excess revenues over expenditures, we send it as surplus down into our fund balance, and then we'll transfer that into our excess fund balance. So anything that's above our reserves goes into Fund 68, our excess fund balance. And then when we're doing things either in the general fund or in another fund, we are able to transfer that excess balance back to the general fund to be able to use for our carryover items, for one-time items, or to transfer to other funds that are also using one-time items such as capital. So one thing you'll see is that in prior years, we're able to generate, we had good revenues, better than anticipated revenues, and departments were able to hold the line on expenses, so we had a surplus in prior years. And you'll see this year, we're going to be using some of that surplus to cover one-time expenditures in the general fund, and then we're also going to be transferring a large amount of that to our capital fund to be able to cover some capital expenses. Another item, and we've touched on this in prior years, this is continuing again this year, although I think this is probably going to be one of our last, either our last year or second-to-last year where this occurs. As you'll recall, we've discussed previously in our IMRF and Social Security Fund, we had a fairly significant fund balance. And so because we had that fund balance, we haven't had to put as much property taxes towards that. We'd accumulated the fund balance because we had some expenses we were anticipating coming out of there. They ended up not being as high as we expected them to be. And so because of that, we don't need to put the property taxes into that account, but we're not able to transfer the property taxes to anywhere else. So what we have done is we have started each year to put a little bit less in property taxes towards that fund so that it's using some of its deficit to cover its ongoing expenses. We're then taking that revenue, putting it into the general fund, but because we don't want to start any programs that rely on that revenue, we're then immediately taking that money. We get it in the general fund and moving it over to our excess fund balance fund and Fund 68, which we can use in future years to be able to cover one-time expenditures. So that kind of covers very short version of Funds and Budgeting 101, kind of covers the 50,000-foot view.
And if, and we started off with a very general. If anybody got a question on any of our funds, then everybody's here to look at the numbers. So let's move on to that, Spencer.
Okay. I want to make a comment while he's doing that. Everything that's showing up on display, we realize it's being, we realize now, is being chopped off, so the video out is probably looking like that, too. So we're apologizing for the graphics not displaying correctly. We don't know what that is, but we'll have this whole presentation anyway posted.
Does everybody have a hard copy? So good, so you can follow us, okay.
Okay. So moving on to the 20,000-foot view, so zooming in a little bit more from the broader idea of budgets in general, talking a little bit about our specific situations right now. So we're moving on to Section B. So for those on the computer, it's B-01 2016-17 Fund Summary. And we're starting off on the tab, should default to the tab, that's called the FCF Summary or the Funds Carry Forward Summary. For those on the hard copy, we're on page 10. So this gives a summary of all of the different funds that we just talked about. You can see what their estimated fund balance is. We expect this to be the balance at the beginning of the fiscal year. So on May 1st, 2016, you can see what we have as budgeted revenues, what we've got as budgeted expenses, therefore, the change in fund balance, and then what we project the fund balance will be going forward at the end of the fiscal year, going on to the next year. So walking through this, you can see, first of all, our general fund is, we've got expected revenues of, so first of all, we get an expected fund balance of about 6.3, almost 6.4 million. This includes our reserve that we keep. So by policy, the village keeps 20% of annual expenditures as a reserve, sort of as a rainy day fund in case something catastrophic happens. We have a little bit of cash on hand.
Like Springfield.
Right. If something unexpected happens with that, absolutely. That's a prime example of why we have that. In addition to that amount that we've got in reserves, this also includes amounts that are not easy for us to use or spend. It's money that is ours, but it's not easily accessible money. So we have, we have accounts with our insurance providers, both our health insurance as well as our liability insurance, where we have accounts with them that they're able to use that money, and as we have expenditures there, they take the money out of those reserves. And so that money is also part of this 6.4 million that you see sitting right here. So this is the amount that we don't really want to touch and use because in general, our general fund should be the money that comes in, covers the money that goes out. And you can see, we're budgeting to receive about $26 million. We're expecting to expend about $26 million, and we're looking right now at a projected surplus of $3,566 in the general fund, which would then put our projected fund balance at the end of the year to 6.4 million. So just a little bit of an increase, and as always, as we're doing budgets, we try to be conservative in, we try to underestimate revenues and overestimate expenses so that when we actually have the actual activity that happens, then we're able to be safe and we're not pulling out of our fund balances and depleting those. In our convention tourism fund, you can see we have about 1.5 million to begin with. We expect to end the year with about 1.47 because we're looking at a deficit of about 28,000. We'll get into more detail about that as we go there. We've got our downtown parking fund, that as I mentioned, it's slowly accumulating. We're getting about $2,000 in there each year, so it's going to go from about 11.8 to about 13.7. We've got our vehicle replacement fund. This year, we're putting more money in to set aside for future years than we're actually spending. We're putting in about 875,000, spending about 573,000. So by the end of the fiscal year, we expect to have about 2.1 million. And again, that's to be able to forward fund vehicles to purchase them as we need them. Our capital projects fund, we've got about $2.6 million in there. We're expecting to bring in about 2.3, spend about 3.1, and end up with about $1.8 million left there at the end of the year. Our bond funds, as we talked about, we expect to have our expenses cover exactly what our fund balance is, so we'll have $0 left in those funds by the end of the year. Our stormwater infrastructure fund, we expect to be coming into the year with about 944,000, and we expect to be bringing in about 1 point, almost 1.3 million, and we expect to be spending about 1.7 million this year, leaving a balance at the end of the year of about $476,000. In our water fund, we expect right now to have, to start the year with about 700,000 and end the year with about 485,000. Our bond fund typically stays right about the same. We're amount, we have the amount to cover our bond payments by committing to have the amount in the fund before we actually make the transfers. If we have that amount in the fund all the time, then we're able to get a cheaper interest rate on our bonds. So we've set the money aside and have a balance of about 740,000, and then we transfer in about 990,000 and spend about 990,000 each year, so that stays pretty close to the same. Our motor fuel tax fund, you can see we're looking at reducing that fund balance a little bit by about $87,000, expect to end the year with about 971,000. Our IMRF fund, we're planning on starting, IMRF Social Security, we're planning on starting with about 1.3 million and ending with about 590,000. And we talked a little bit about the use of those balances. The excess fund balance fund, right now, we have about 3.5 million in there. We expect right now, we're planning on ending the year with 1.5 million. And the additional 1.5 million that we're planning to keep in there is sort of an additional extra safety net. So as we talked about, we've got about 20% of our fund balance of our annual operating expenditures covered by policy. Last year, we had said we should also keep some additional money set aside in that fund just in case we had other expenses. Last year, we were looking at a potential expenses for an ERI, but also looking at in case anything happens with the state until we get a little bit more firm foundation, firm understanding of what they're planning to do, we wanted to set aside a little bit of money. So this year, we're not holding as much as we were holding at the, at last year, but we're still planning to hold an extra $1.5 million in reserves above our 20% limit. So that puts us right about 28, 29% of our annual expenditure. So not quite, just a little bit under 30% to have that extra 1.5 as an additional cushion in case unexpected things happens, especially with Springfield as a state right now. Then we've got our two TIF funds. As you can see in there, we're expecting to potentially end the year with about 3,000 and almost 13.60. As you can see, we don't have a lot of money in there yet, and we are simply putting aside some money in case we have to do some things with those TIF districts. So that kind of gives an overview of our funds carried forward. The next page is our fund summary.
Spencer, do you have?
Yep.
Real quick, you said you always project high in expenses, low in income. Your estimated fund balance for this current fiscal year, did you know what you projected last year at this time when we were doing? Find it later, but I'm just curious what you projected versus what is going to actually happen or so.
Yeah. Look for that. Okay, our fund summary page shows that we've got a projected net of surplus of 3,566 in the general fund. You can see how that goes by department. You can see in general administration, we've got about $15.7 million worth of revenue, and that's because in legislation, Human Resources Administration, sort of the budget account that covers for the board as well as the administrative offices, we've included all the general tax revenue in there. So that's where all the sales tax, the use tax, the income tax, everything that's not easily attributable to another department fits into that, into there. So we've got about $4.4 million worth of expenses there. Commissions have about 56, almost $57,000 worth of expenses. Police Department has about $6.5 million in expenses, with the Fire Department at almost $5 million. Public Works is about 4.5, almost 4.6 million in expenses. Then we've got a category called pass-throughs and transfers. So these are money that the general fund gets and then moves on to somewhere else. So we have about $2 million that we receive in property tax revenues that we have to then pass on to our police pension. We have about $1,000 that we get in as police extra duty wages where the police work. Another company would hire the village to have the police officers work there. We don't get a lot of money through that, but it's not really money that's, it's not really revenue the village gets. It's that's, the villi, it's not really revenue the village gets, it's really revenue that we pass directly on to the officers. We've got $30,000 in fire protection, a 2% foreign fire, so this is a tax that insurance companies out of, I believe it's out of the state, have to pay, they pay it to the Illinois Municipal League, who remits a portion to the village, the village then has to pay the full amount that we receive directly to our 2% foreign fire fund, and it's, the fund is governed by a separate board, and they are able to use that money for some, for the benefit of the fire department, so that, again, that's not money that the village has any control over, it simply comes in and goes out. We are looking at a transfer from reserves for one-time expenditures of about 2.1 million this year, so with our reserve fund, after we set aside the extra 1.5 million for, to have some additional coverage, then we're able to transfer 2.1 million into the general fund. At the same time, we have that extra property tax that we talked about, additional money going into the general fund of 187,000, and that's, we're coming in as property tax, and then we're transferring it right to our reserves. We also are transferring money for debt service, and that debt service this year is for our bond as well as a developer's note, we have money that comes in that's set aside for that, in the case of places, in the case of the bond, it's money that came in from Places for Reading, in the case of the developer's note, it's sales tax generated from that developer, from Mariano's, and that money just goes directly through us on to those debt payments. And then we've got some additional transfers, we have, this year, the plan is to transfer about 1.5 million to the capital fund, to be able to help the capital fund handle capital projects, and then a $865,000 transfer to the vehicle replacement program we've talked about. We also have additional village-wide general increases, so these are increases that apply across the board, and we want to be able to present them so that you, as the board, can see as a total the amount that we're talking about when we talk about these increases, rather than build them into each department, so you can kind of see them as a, as a total. The first item that's listed there, or additional personnel changes, there's nothing in that specific category this year, as you'll recall, last year, there were quite a few specific personnel changes we were looking at, that all kind of fit together as one big piece, because there were a lot of moving pieces with it. This year, we don't have that situation, as you recall, last year, a lot of that was generated by the ERI, now those changes have been built into the departments, so there's no additional personnel changes listed there. We'll get into health insurance a little bit later, but there's not, all the health insurance has been already distributed through the departments, because it was such a minor change. We did want to call your attention to the agreed-upon increases, we have about $72,000 worth of increases, where salaries are, in total, our salaries have to go up about $72,000 next year for increases that are already agreed or contractually obligated, so these would include increases that are due as a result of the collective bargaining unit for police, so when the police officers, per their union contract, get step increases, where after a certain number of years, they, their salary goes up, that's included there, as is longevity for both the police and the non-union, so as they serve, as employees serve an additional year, they get an additional increase due to longevity, it also includes any qualification agreement increases, so as you're aware, when, typically, when we hire someone, we start them at a lower salary and tell them, assuming your performance is acceptable, and we continue having you after a qualification period, which is anywhere from six months to 18 months, then at the end of that qualification period, you would be able to receive an additional amount of salary that puts you up to where you should be per the market. So we start them off a little bit lower, that's also included in that $72,000.
Approximately 5%.
Yes, typically, it's about 5%. Yes. We also have an amount in there for wage increases, and this year, we've got a general wage adjustment in the draft budget right now of 2.25%, so that's the amount that is in the union contract, which the union officers are, were obligated to give to them, the 244,000 includes giving that same increase to the non-union employees as well. So that covers the general fund, moving on to the convention tourism fund, I guess I'm not going to go through all the details on these, we just kind of walked through all of them, you can see them just presented a little bit different way, but you can see the projected nets the same as on the sheet we just looked at. I do want to call your attention to the next sheet, which is referred to as the interfund transfer summary, for those on the computer, it's the next tab over, for those on the paper, it's the next page over. As we talked about, we have a lot of transfers that go in and out, and we have a lot of money where we're transferring money from the general fund, for example, to the capital fund, or from the excess reserves into the general fund, so this sheet pulls out those transfers. So you can see where we had listed revenues from the general fund of about 26 million, about 2.5 million of those were actually from transfers, so if you, excluding all the transfers, we're, we're just moving money around, we actually had actual revenues of about 23.6 million in the general fund. So grand total, we've been, we have transfers moving around, we've got about 6.6 million worth of transfers, so where we had listed our revenue of about 43 million, we're actually looking at an actual revenue of about 36 million, similarly, expenditures, we're looking at about 43,000, sorry, 43 million worth of expenditures, once you take out that same 6.6 million worth of transfers. The next page shows a comparison, and this is just trying to look at operating accounts and a comparison excluding pass-throughs, so you're able to see for the operating accounts, how does it compare to prior years. Now, it doesn't make a lot of sense to compare prior years when you're talking about capital, because that just varies year to year, depending on what project you're looking at, but for operating expenditures, it makes a lot of sense to say, how did what we're doing, how does what we're planning to do now compare to what we did previously? And you'll see in the general fund, we have an increase of about 367,000, you'll see that most of that increase is because of the village-wide general increases of about 316,000. So there, in addition to that, there's a little bit of other increases that we'll cover very, very briefly here, you'll see more as we get into the departments, but in the general administration, it's an increase of about 133,000, a large portion of that is in IT for some of the, it's the IT infrastructure that they need, and the, there's a financial package, which you'll see in there as we get into that. You'll notice that the police department had a decrease of about, almost $170,000 decrease, so they've been, they've been able to cut expenses by about $170,000, and we're very appreciative of that.
Attaboy.
Sorry, what?
Complimenting the chief.
Oh, yes, we're, we're very grateful for that.
Yes, staff.
They've done a tremendous job, as we went through the ERI process, they were able to take advantage of those opportunities to be able to reduce costs and to consolidate positions. Also, a portion of that is, as we've had older police officers retire, as we've had the more senior police officers retire, as they've been at the higher end of the pay range, they've been replaced with the lower-paid police officers, and so that's also reduced. The fire department, we'll get into the details of these requested increases, but we're looking at a potential increase of 158,000, Public Works is looking at a decrease of about $160,000, the-
Well, they beat the police department.
No.
Oh, no, they didn't.
Police department decreased, fire department increased.
So the, the large portion of the decrease in the public works department is due to the fact that, as you'll recall, last year, we had a lot of tree removals in the budget, we've gotten some of those done this year, so we don't need to be rebudgeting for those tree removals again, and that's a large piece of that, there's also been some personnel savings and adjustments within the public works department as a result of the ERI. Transfers to the vehicle replacement project, vehicle replacement program, we'll get into that a little bit more, but that was an increase of about $90,000. In convention tourism, we saw an increase of about $126,000, our bond fund has an increase of about, almost $250,000 as a result of the developer's note, and our IMRF Social Security fund has an increase of about 413,000, and again, we'll get into a little bit more detail on that. So the last item on the 20,000-foot view is, the next item on the 20,000-foot view is labeled BO2, it's the Consolidated Strat Plan, for those of you on the paper, it is page 14. So based on the strategic plan, the village departments went through and identified how, we, we went through and identified how all the costs that we have as a village tie in and connect to the strategic plan. So as you're aware, we have, I'll just briefly walk you through, and you don't have all these things in paper, but you can kind of look at the screen, as you're aware, we've got the departments divide their budgets up into programs, and then we had them take each of the programs and assign percentages to each of the different areas in the strategic plan, to say what percentage of their costs for each program tied to which area of the strategic plan. Then for each individual department, we were able to map it to say, for each section of the strategic plan, how much are they spending, and then we consolidated all of that to show you for the entire village, how much is being spent in each area of the strategic plan. Now, a lot of this is some estimates, and it's certainly not that we would say, okay, we can, you know, if we stop doing anything about leadership and authority, we would save this much money, but it's, it's a way to say, from the money that we're spending, here's how it ties to the areas of our strategic plan. So we wanted to be able to show you that, so you can see the amount that we're doing in each of the different areas currently. All right, the next item labeled BO3, starting on page 15 on the paper packet, is a summary of our budget in graphic form, so last year, after we did the presentation, it was requested that we also do a, put together a pie chart that shows how the expenditures occurred, I'm trying to see if I can get this to show up fully on the screen.
We might have to spend more IT.
Plan's coming down.
It's because we cut IT last year.
Yeah, that's what. While he's trying to fix that up to this point, anybody got, we're still on a pretty broad overview, any questions up to this point? Wait till we get to the detail fund, then we'll get some questions, so, anybody from the board? I figured while Spencer's waiting for IT to, and again, Manager Mason, was that one of the items we cut last year?
Yeah, thank you, Glenn.
Ah, okay. Got text.
All right.
Just, that's-
Yeah, now you can see a lot better.
Now, take money out of IT.
Yeah, now we'll have the money back. Okay, so you can kind of see in here, in general, how our budgets are split up, you can see the majority of our expenditures are under the general fund and excess balance fund, you can see the way that's split out, about 9% of that in general administration, 14% to police, 10% fire, 9% public works, and 9% pass-throughs and transfers. You can see we've got about 18% of our budget in capital equipment, 7% in our special revenue and debt payment, 17% in our water fund, and not even a whole percent in our expenditures for our TIFs. You can see all of this in the past history, over how it's gone over the last several years, you can see the same percentages, you can kind of see what's happened and how things have adjusted year to year. You can also see total expenditures and see how, from a village-wide perspective, how that's changed over time. You can see our general fund operating accounts and the percentage for each of the different departments there. And you can see, in terms of dollars, for each of the departments and how those have adjusted over time. You can also see, the final slide in this section shows our general fund budgeted revenues and expenditures, the line that's along the top is the expenditure, sorry, is the revenue, the expenditures are broken up by category, you can see that from 2016 to 17, both our revenues and expenditures have gone up, and you can see the reason for that is our pass-through and transfers have gone up from 2016-17, so we have, because of that excess fund balance we have, we're transferring the money from Fund 68 into our general fund to be able to use for one-time expenditures, and then either spending it in the general fund or transferring it out to capital, which is what's increasing both the expenses and the revenues. All right, so that covers the 20,000-foot view, so I'm going to jump, assuming there's no more questions, I'm going to jump into the 10,000-foot view and take a look at some of our revenue trends. So for those of you who are on the computer, we're on CO2 20, actually, I guess we'll jump, first of all, we'll hit our considerations, and then we'll jump into revenue trends, so we're in the item that is C, right now, it's labeled CO2 2017, copy considerations. So this is getting into a little bit more of a view as to the specific things we're asking for or proposing as changes for this year in the budget, and you can see them listed here, you can see, we've started them off with the general fund, we've got them broken down by department, we've tried to color-code the departments, so you can see, as you'll notice, we've got some different sections for the departments, so items that are in facilities, we'll deal with other departments, and so we've tried to color-code those to make those easier to understand. In some of the items, we felt it was important to be able to walk the board through what the base budget submission included, so that base budget submission was, we told people, based on what you've currently got in the budget, you know, make some inflationary adjustments, you know, if, if you've found that you're spending a little bit less in one area and more in another, feel free to make those kind of adjustments, but the base budget submission is pretty much what we've been doing in the prior years. And then we're looking at additional items on top of the base budget, so in some situations, we felt it'd be important for the board to know what's currently in the base budget, so you know, when we talk about an increase on something, you know what we're increasing it from. So not all of them felt that, it seemed like it was extremely important to put that in there, so on the few, we've got that column filled in, but not all of them. The next column labeled Initial 2016-17 Request is, shows you the amount that was initially requested, the amount we initially thought about putting in there, and then the next column shows considerations in draft budget, which is how much is actually moved forward into the draft budget, in some cases, they'll be the same, in some cases, what was initially requested has been pared down a little bit to be able to fit within the draft budget. The next three columns explain which type of expense the considerations of draft budget reflect. Ongoing represent things that are, items that we expect to have continuing year to year, one-time are expenditures that we think will only happen one time, and carryover are items that we anticipated, we, we already budgeted for it last year, but kept it on hold because we were being cautious last year, and so we're including that, carrying that over into the budget this year. So I'll walk through each of these considerations, and we can discuss them as we go if there's questions. So the first item in Fire Department is increase each of two training officer's hours from 10 hours to 15 hours, there's been some additional requirements for training and keeping track of training at the state level, and so we've got to increase the number of hours we dedicate to that. Similarly, we're looking at a software for, to be able to track that training, which is a $6,000 expense, it's at, I'm sorry, it's an $8,000 expense, $6,000 will be each year, there's an extra $2,000 as a one-time implementation cost. The next item on the list is labeled 457 Part-Time Incentive Program. As the village board will recall, the paid-on-call Fire Department is something we've talked about several times in the past, it's a great system in that it's able to save us significant amounts of money. As you'll recall, in the past year, there was some discussion about moving to create a fire pension or an IMRF situation, as you'll recall, we had things changed with IMRF so that we found that we might have to move our firefighters into IMRF, in which case we would have had to be spending roughly $250,000 a year to cover that. Other communities have had similar situations, and they've ended up moving into IMRF, which has created a little bit of a challenge for the village, in that as we're trying to compete and attract part-time employees to work for our part-time system, instead of having to have all the costs associated with a full-time fire department, it's getting harder to attract those employees, because they say, well, I can get something contributed towards my pension if I go work for a different part-time fire department instead of the Village of Westmont. And so one thing, and this item is something that you'll recall, was initially presented last year at the budget, we were still unsure of exactly everything that was happening with IMRF at that time, and we held off on it, and so last year, it was a consideration that did not get included in the budget, but what we're proposing this time is $88,000 as an incentive program to try to be able to attract people to maintain our part-time fire department system. What this would be is, it would be saying, the village would be able to, we're putting aside enough money to cover, the village being able to contribute to a 457, which is similar to a 401K, so a retirement savings account, to be able to contribute to that account, $1 for each shift hour that a firefighter works. So if a firefighter works- So if a firefighter works, you know, 1,000 hours, 1,000 shift hours in a year, then at the end of the year, the village should be able to contribute up to $1,000 into that employee's 457 as a, as something. It's certainly not as expensive as the IMRF costs, but it's providing a little bit of an incentive to be able to help attract and retain firefighters. The next item that's on there is the mobile integrated healthcare. This is something that the board's talked about at multiple committee meetings where it's a change where hospitals are now going to be utilizing, going to be able to utilize the village to cover some integrated healthcare where we'll be able to go do some wellness checks on people and check on them after they get out of the hospital. So that's going to cost, that may cost some additional money if we don't have staff that's currently working able to go take care of it. Many of the visits will be able to be done with staff as they're working their regular shift, but there may be some additional costs, which would be that $5,000 that you see there. The next item on there is $20,000 for the new CAD station-based numbering implementation. There's been talk about countywide dispatching, moving to a new numbering system, which would end up costing some money. We're not 100% sure if this is going to go through. Obviously, if the numbering system doesn't have to change, we're not going to be spending the $20,000 for it. But if it does, we want to make sure we have the money in the budget. A large portion of that cost is reprogramming of radios because our station would now have to be known as a different number and would end up costing us as we reprogram the numbers. There's a little bit of cost to change the numbering on the vehicles, so our vehicle numbers would have to change if we went to this countywide system. So that's the $20,000 for that. We also are at the point where our promotional list is pretty much expired. We need to be able to update that list, so we need to do promotional testing, which is approximately $9,000. Last year, in the budget, we included $10,000 towards reaccreditation. We were unsure if that reaccreditation visit was going to be something that occurred in April or in May. So we had the money in this fiscal year. We did not end up spending it. We're going to be spending it next fiscal year for that. As you're aware, we do the accreditation every few years where the, they come out to the international, so it's award at the International Chiefs Conference, which is the next item down. They, they really go together. So we're accredited and we have a lot of paperwork that we put together and the fire department's done a lot of work on that, as they do all the time, to make sure that we receive that accreditation award. And then they have people that come out, do a walkthrough with the fire department and then if we receive the award, they present it to us at the International Fire Chiefs Conference. And so what we've got included in the budget this year is that $10,000 to cover that accreditation as well as $1,500 to have an additional person outside of the fire department go to be able to receive that award for that accreditation. We also have an increased dispatch contract. So as you're aware, we have our dispatch through the Village of Downers Grove. There's an increase that occurs each year. We've got a portion of that in the fire and you'll see another portion of that show up in the police.
And sir, what percentage increase is that?
For the dispatch?
Yep.
I don't know off the top of my head. I will find out or have Ruth find out while I keep talking.
You have to repeat the question too.
Sorry. So the question was, what is the percentage increase in the dispatch cost this year? Ruth will find that out for us as we go through.
That's two.
Yep. We've got the $53,000 for a contract paramedic rate increase. So this is something that the village board has discussed, again, at committee level, where we wanted to have a little bit of money at, so we've, in our contract with the Kertz Paramedic Service, we have a built-in amount that they can increase the contract each year. This $53,000 is within that amount. We discussed it at the committee and one of the reasons we wanted to make sure it got done was because it's been a while since the med, their medics received a wage increase, which makes it harder to attract medics who want to, from their company, to come work at Westmont if they can make more money working somewhere else. So moving on to community development, we've got an $8,000 set aside for remodel of the conference room to try to bring our conference room up to date, to be able to help as we're working with developers and meeting with developers. We want to make sure we've got a conference room that explains to them just how, how great of a village we, we have and that it's something they want to associate with. We also have $50,000 in there for a GIS technician. We're in conversations with another community to be able to see if we can do a shared GIS technician. GIS is geographic information systems. It's a way to track a lot of different items on maps and be able to kind of tie a map to a database. So it's something that can be able to provide a lot of great analytic assistance. It's something that some communities are able to use to be able to help their public, be able to get some more information from the village. And so as we look at getting this position, we'll be able to see exactly some of the benefits we can get from this. But it's definitely something that we want to look into, especially we'd like to work with another community to be able to do it in the most cost-effective way possible.
Question?
Yes.
Have you looked into looking at a consortium?
We have. So there are some consortiums, especially towards the northern suburbs have a fairly large consortium. The costs for that consortium are a little bit higher than what we're looking to do. And so we're sort of looking at just working with another community to try to save costs from that. But that is something we've looked at to see if we can join one of the consortiums and it's just a little bit higher cost than we're looking for. But, great question. Moving on to the finance department, we have an increase in our audit costs this year of about $5,000. That is due to a change in accounting standards. There's GASB 67 and 68, which changes the way that we have to report the pension and the pension liability. What that ends up meaning for the auditors is they have a lot more tests they have to run and a lot more in-depth analysis they have to do on those actuarial reports. Because of that, their costs are going up and so they're then passing that cost on to us, so we're seeing a $5,000 increase with that. We also have a request in the budget from the finance department for $4,000 to scan some accounts payable files. This is something that, as we had the economic downturn several years ago, we stopped scanning any files. We've had files sort of backing up as a backlog. We're now starting to look at reducing that backlog. So we've got about five or six years of extra years there that should have been scanned that have not been scanned. We're looking at starting to scan two years' worth at a time so that in about five or six years, we'll finally be caught up. In HR administration legislation, we've got $12,000 set aside for strategic planning services. This would be for helping creating a strategic plan implementation guide. This is something the Strategic Planning Implementation Committee will be looking into a little bit more. We want to make sure that if they decide they want to go the route of having some professional assistance with that, we have the money budgeted. But obviously, we wouldn't be spending it if we don't need it or if the committee doesn't feel that that's important. But we want to make sure we have the money set aside in case we do. We have $2,000 listed for community room furniture. We also are looking at a proposal of increasing the life safety development grants by $15,000. So this is something that we currently have in the budget at $15,000. The proposal right now, and it's currently included in the draft budget, is to increase that by $15,000 to have a total of $30,000 in the budget. This is something that has come up a couple of times throughout the years. We've had people come in for life safety grants. There's been the request of, could we have a little bit more money in the budget for that program? So we're able to work that in this year and have that extra $15,000 there. We have also an amount in there for the DuPage Senior Citizen Council. We currently have $24,000 budgeted for that. Initially, there was some thought, they had talked, as you had seen at a prior committee, there were a couple of years where due to timing and miscommunication, we ended up not making a payment. There was initially some thought that they might request us to make a payment for a contribution we had made in prior years. We put that in there for initial consideration. As you know, when we had them out for the committee, they only requested the $24,000, so we've pulled that out and are not planning to do any additional contribution because it doesn't look like they've, they needed or have requested it. Or at least, it doesn't look like they've requested it. We have an amount of money set aside for a part-time compensation study. As the board will recall, about a year ago, we did a compensation study for full-time employees and at that time, we told you the next step was to do a compensation study for part-time employees. We are looking at doing that study in-house as opposed to paying anybody to do it, but wanted to make sure we have some money set aside.
This isn't the cost of the study.
If we need to.
It's not the cost of the study, it's the result to apply to the findings.
Yes, thank you. We also, at a committee, discussed with you the idea of having part-time employees receive some paid time off. As we talked about at that committee, there is not any actual budgetary change with that each year in the budget. We always budget for the full amount that a part-time employee could work because we don't know for sure if they'll be taking time off or not. The, so if the village board does want to adopt that paid time off for part-time employees, it's not going to cost anything additional in the budget. So we want to make sure that is included here so that you're aware of that. One of the things that we talked about at the committee is the fact that we are looking at moving more and more towards part-time employees because it's a great way to save money. Every time somebody leaves or retires, the first question we ask is, can we fill this position with a part-time employee? As a result of that, we're starting to get more part-time employees and want to continue moving in that direction. And so we wanted to look at what kind of benefits we could do to make sure we can, again, attract and retain good part-time employees.
Spencer, can you define part-time employee? That would receive that, what?
Sure. Yeah. So the part-time employees that would receive this would be any part-time employees that are outside of the fire department, they're covered separately. So the paid-on-call fire department is separate, but other non-paid-on-call fire department employees who work less than 40 hours a week currently don't receive any paid time off, we would be saying those employees would be able to receive some paid time off. The details of it are something we can discuss at a committee level in more detail, but my guess is we'd probably want to say there's a minimum number of hours you have to work each year to be able to qualify for that. Most of our employees work somewhere between 20 and 35 hours, so it would probably be somewhere in there that would be able to receive those benefits. And obviously, any benefits they get would be prorated based on the number of hours they work.
So it might be a threshold of 1,000 hours.
Yeah, probably something like that.
Or higher.
Yep.
Can we go back just again for, for explanation? On the North Fire District impact, you took it out.
Yes.
What happens if they decide not to go for the, the increase that was being proposed to them?
So, yeah, and I, you're right, I'm sorry, I kind of skipped over that one. I apologize for that. The North Fire District impact is, right now, the North Fire District provides money to, directly to the fire department or for the benefit of the fire department. It doesn't go through the village, but it goes for the benefit of the fire department. They have an amount where they will contribute equipment to the fire department and they'll also contribute some training to the fire department. So if that district were to be eliminated this year and they were unable to contribute that equipment and training to the fire department, they would need to be able to have that made up separately. Additionally, we, the village would be getting the revenue. As you know, there's been discussions that if that district were to be eliminated, we would be funding the coverage of fire protection services to them through a special service area. With the special service area, the village would be able to receive the money that had previously gone to the district. That money would then be routed to the fire department to make sure we cover those $32,000 worth of cost.
That's the explanation of the actual request, to answer your question. We don't expect that to occur quickly within the year, probably more than a year from now, so.
It's going to take a while.
It was identified, but we removed it. Right. But it's still a valid request or concern, but probably for next year.
In the IT department, we're looking at an increase of about $3,500 for some additional Citrix licenses and those are the licenses that allow us to be able to do virtualization and the virtualization's able to help us save money. So we're able to get, you know, rather than having as many desktops as we used to have, we're able to have much cheaper Chromebooks and be able to do some of the same things that we do much cheaper hardware-wise, so we have to spend it in terms of, a little bit, spend a little bit more in terms of licensing. We had a request initially for some additional tablets for Fire Command. We think we're able to hold off on those for this year. We also have, so tablets that would go in the Fire Command vehicles, we're holding off on those for this year. The time clock software is something that we had as a carryover from last year, as is the financial ERP system. The ERP system, we initially had budgeted last year about $350,000 for it. And looking at the RFP responses that we received, they're coming in closer to about $500,000. We had talked with our consultant last year and gotten an initial estimate of about $350,000. And then as we walked through it and got the responses, the consultant indicated that she had forgotten to include an implementation cost with that when we gave, we gave you the numbers last year. So we're now looking at, it'll probably be closer to $500,000. If we can whittle it down a little bit, we will. We've got some responses that are significantly higher than the $500,000. We wouldn't be able to do those. But, so that's what we're looking at this year, is it's actually going to be closer to $500,000.
Spencer, how long is that, good for, how long is that software lasting? Is that five years, 10 years?
Six months.
Six months. That's what I'm afraid of.
Everything's obsolete as soon as you buy.
Our current software, we started using in about 2001 or so, so it's lasted about 15 years.
We, we should have got rid of it five years ago.
In 2002, we should have got rid of it.
And the auditors are requesting.
Yeah, yes, the auditors have indicated it would be beneficial to get a software that's a little bit higher quality that can do a little bit.
Right. For a number of years.
Those kind of things for control purposes.
So we can get five to seven years out of it?
Yeah, I would say at least, yeah, probably closer to 10, I would think.
Okay, thank you.
Moving on to Public Works Facilities, we've got a $5,000 request for a portion of an aerial lift. We'll be looking to split that with convention tourism, so you'll see another $5,000 in the convention tourism account for that aerial lift. This is something that'll be able to be used both inside to help with facilities and outside to help as they hang decorations for holidays, which is why it's covered partially under the convention tourism and partially under facilities. We've got $2,500 for power washing the depot, another $10,000 for replacing of additional benches in the CBD. This is something, as you'll recall, we saw that last year. We replaced some benches, the ones that needed it the most last year. We kind of talked about saying, let's replace a few benches each year, get the ones that are the worst each year. And so this is another $10,000 to continue replacing those. And another $10,000 for epoxy flooring at the depot. It's something that we budgeted this past year, haven't done it as we were holding off on things, but we're planning to carry that over again next year. There was a request for an additional security door, like a fire exit, an additional fire exit in the village hall. Unfortunately, we didn't have the money to be able to get that in this time. And additionally, there was discussion of putting a window in municipal services, decided that at this point, we want to hold off on that as well, not spend that $35,000. Also in Public Works Facilities, we've got a caulking repair at the fire department for $8,500, some miscellaneous repairs that need to happen at the fire department for $5,500, some pump replacement for $1,200, and auto light dimmer switches in the police department for about $1,000. At Public Works Facilities, we're looking at replacing some garage doors, the garage door openers, another $5,000 in landscaping costs for some of our newly acquired properties. As you're, as you're aware, we acquired some properties for stormwater detention. To be able to cover those with landscaping is going to cost us about $5,000. We're looking at carrying over $200,000 for our ash removal, ash tree removal. As you know, we budgeted some money for that last year. We've got many of those trees done, but not all of them, so we're looking at probably spending about $200,000 for that.
And Spencer, that's on top of us doing internal.
Yes.
Yes. So this is contracting out so we can get it done quicker.
Yes.
This is to finish it, complete it?
I think that's what John said.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good.
Yep.
Get it done.
That's the hope. We've got $5,000 for arbor day trees, $2,500 for holiday tree for Westmont Center. We've got a few different costs that I'll deal with, that I'll say EAB. So you've got EAB, grass, seed, dirt and mulch. You've got some additional parkway trees that we're looking at planting in-house for $46,000. Another 320 trees we're looking at planting, contractual planting for $100,000 and then gator bags to help with watering of those trees. So all together, with all of those EAB tree planting items, we're talking about $158,000 worth of tree planting expenditures. We also had a discussion about electronic recycling program subsidy. We had contacted Waste Management and they had indicated that we could do a curbside electronic recycling, but it would end up costing about $80,000. Something we could potentially, if we wanted to look at passing on to the residents, we initially were hoping to see if we could get that into our draft budget to do a subsidy so that the village would cover that. Right now, that's not included in the draft budget. So you can see, there's nothing carried forward into that. If that is something we want to do, we could. One of the other things is that we've, at the time we first started discussing it, there was no electronics recycling program going on. was no electronics recycling program going on. We'd kind of had a break for a while. There's now Benenfert Electronics Recycling Program that started up again, and so it may not be as much of a need as it was when we initially started talking about it. I don't know if you had.
Just to elaborate on your earlier point that the, it can be included in the Waste Management contract and that cost gets distributed to all of the properties and whether you use it or not. The general cost would be $80,000, just to make it available as a curbside recycling program. So the $80,000 that was in here was as if we wanted to absorb that, and that's why, you know, we call it a subsidy, that's just if we wanted to pay for it. You can still do it and pass the cost on, just like the regular refuse collection, but that's for that program. And then, like you mentioned, you know, more and more, whether it's the township or the county, there's resources continually becoming available to do this that we might not even need to address it at all.
Okay, the next two items go together, looking at moving a street maintenance worker two to a street foreman, a net cost of about $12,000, so $71,000 for a foreman, reducing a maintenance worker two, so we'd have a net cost of about $12,200. We're looking at some concrete for light repairs, replacements for about $15,000, and then an option for a street sweeper where we could rent a street sweeper once a month to take care of our pervious concrete areas. They need a special kind of street sweeper, which we don't have. We're going to come back to this a little bit later as we get into the vehicle replacement program because, timing-wise, this is perfect because right now we're looking at replacing a street sweeper. And so we have the opportunity right now to decide whether it makes sense to replace the street sweeper with one that can handle our pervious concrete or replace it with a cheaper version and then pay for this rental. And so we'll talk a little bit more about that as we get to the vehicle replacement program, but right now it's included as both, so we can decide which way we want to go with that. We've got a sign cutter replacement for $9,000. Last year, we were able to put in some new software. There are some changing requirements as to how we have to do signs. So we had to get some new software. The old cutter is able to handle some parts of that, but not all of the requirements, and so we need to get a new cutter to be able to continue handling all of those requirements.
So when we saw when we took the tour, right?
Yes. Yep, I think at the tour, we talked about that. You were able to see that. Yep. There's an additional increase in police for that consolidated dispatch fee increase there as well, so that's the police portion of that.
That's a worst-case number two. I mean, we're not done with that contract, but that was, you know, that was the true-up number, I think, from last year or so. That's the worst it can turn out. Expect it to be much less.
Okay, so that covers our general fund considerations. Moving into the Capital Projects Fund, and this lists all of the items in the Capital Projects Fund. So I'll try to go through them fairly quickly, but I'll try to hit some of the major points. We've got some money set aside for the Eagle Creek program that we just talked about for some maintenance and monitoring for that, as well as a little bit of carryover for what's left with engineering. We've got some engineering we set aside for annual sidewalk project. We had that money set aside last year and didn't use it, so that's coming through as a carryover. We've got some additional costs for the fires roof repair. We've got, we're working on the design for Willmett. We've got our central business district alley. We've got sections A, B, and F listed in here. So section A is between Cass and Lincoln from Burlington to Irving. Section B is between Cass and Lincoln from Irving to Norfolk, and section F is between Cass and Linden from Norfolk to Naperville. So you can see we've got the engineering, which is sort of designing it, and the construction for sections A and B. We just have the engineering or the design for section F. We also have Richmond Avenue construction. So this is road work where we're working with Clardon Hills. They're doing a portion of it and we're paying a portion of the cost. And you can see those costs listed there. We have $160,000 included in here for a public works needs assessment and facility scenario analysis. This is something that came up at the strategic plan that we wanted to take a look at what we want to do with those public works facilities for the streets and the water. As you are aware, as you went on those tours, they have some significant needs and we need to start deciding what our long-term plans are for those buildings, whether it's to continue to put money into them as they are, whether it's to make some major modifications and some changes, and we just need to get a better idea of what we're looking at long-term before we just keep spending money to fix items as they pop up. So this $160,000 would be to redo, to do a study on that, to see what we need to do, what we need to look at in terms of facilities, and what our long-term plans need to be. I think there, I think there's a question.
Who does that? Who performs that service? Like an engineer firm or?
Yeah, we had one, the last one, we had one done in, I forget the year, like 90, 2003? And it's not just an assessment of the facilities, but it's inventorying what you do, how many people you have, the equipment you use. And then for a facility, you know, how big of a facility would it be to, you know, properly house that and maintain the items you have? I mean, if you've been at Street Division, you know, there's every place we can stick something and park it, you know, it's all occupied.
So do we go off a bid for that, or is that just some professional services?
Yeah, well, I request for qualifications. It's professional services, so it won't be a competitive bid based on dollar.
Sealed bid, at least, okay.
Yeah.
We have a question.
There's actually specific companies that do the analysis and provide software for you to continue to maintain your buildings. I was the village engineer for Old Park for 35 years. I did that for Old Park. There's a company that we used in Virginia Beach that came up and did a complete analysis, and it was very worthwhile, and they continue to use it to this day.
So it's worth this $160,000?
Absolutely. Because that gives you a long-term, gives you a long-term plan for the future and tells you what you need to spend on each building.
Yeah.
Along into the futures.
Thank you. That's good.
Thank you.
That's good information. Thank you.
I know Park has a nice facility, if I remember.
Yeah.
Right there downtown.
The next few items, as you can see, are all carryovers from prior years, so I'm not going to go over them again as we've discussed them in prior years and included them in the budget that year. We initially had thought we would be doing some LED light replacement. Were able to get a grant and take care of it this year, so we don't need to include that in next year's budget because it was already taken care of. We have $150,000 set aside for some brickwork in the central business district. We've got $50,000 that we're able to put towards doing some sidewalks on 61st Street. That's been some complaints we've received from residents, some requests to fill in some of those sidewalk gaps, and so we're, we do have that ability programmed into this budget. We have $500,000 as a one-time expenditure to purchase some land from BNSF, spur some land they own that kind of comes off the railroad track, some of our property, we're looking at potentially purchasing that. And we've got $20,000 in there for some upgrades to the railroad right-of-way. That was something also identified both by the board multiple times, as well as during the strategic plan, that we want to try to help improve that corridor. So we've got some money set aside for that. We always have money in the Capital Projects Fund to cover our copier lease. We also have a cable certifier, and there's a request from IT in terms of fire department building requests. We're looking at getting some door strikes for key fob entry to improve security. I think you saw that as you went on the tour. We're looking at garage door replacements. Got some of them replaced last year, we need to finish the remainder of them this year. We're also looking at a space needs assessment for the fire department building. That's something that we also discussed as we went on the tour, and you saw that. As a result of that, there's a couple of items that we thought would be good to include, but we wanted to wait until we did the space needs assessment. So you saw some issues with the retaining wall on the lower level of the headquarters station. You also saw some need for some landscaping things, but again, we don't want to spend that money until we do that needs assessment to figure out exactly what we need to do.
That retaining wall you're talking about is the outside where the ramping down?
Yes, outside. Yes, yep. We do have money in here for a replacement generator for fire, as you saw.
Because it failed since, we had it out and then it failed, and I was like, all right.
That was vividly pointed out during the tour also.
Yes. Yes, there's also a request for, initially, we, you know, would like to be able to include some front concrete apron work for $50,000, but weren't able to include that in the draft budget at this point. We do have in there $75,000 for upgrade to firehouse station alerting system. This is something that has been talked about at prior Public Safety Committee meetings and is also something that we discussed a little bit while we were on the tour there. As you're aware, there is, there's a couple of different pieces to that. One of the parts of it is the connection between dispatch to the fire department. The way that connection is run needs to be improved. So there were, there were three pieces. One was a console problem that was occurring at dispatch, which was causing major problems. That has been fixed, and so that's good. We still have ongoing issues that make it not as great as it could be, and that's something that we're hoping that the ETSB, the countywide 911 system, is able to handle their talk that they might be able to be helping cover the cost for improving and upgrading those connections. If they do that, then instead of spending the $75,000 to improve that connection, we would be able to spend that $75,000 to improve some of the equipment inside the firehouse that receives those messages for the fire station alerting, to make it a little bit easier to tell exactly where the fire department, where the fire department has to go, where the location of it is, and to make sure they're able to get that alert. So we need to upgrade the equipment in the fire stations, that's getting very old, but if the ETSB is not able to cover that connection piece, then we'll be spending that $75,000 to cover that connection because that's even a higher priority. There was also some additional requests for some furniture and for, for some furniture that would be nice to get in the headquarters station right now. Unfortunately, we had to postpone that, put those costs off for right now. We also initially were looking at setting aside some money for backfilling the South Gravel Lot, but we were able to take care of that in-house without the cost. We pulled that out of the budget. And we're hoping to get some additional money for some showpiece cases due to deterioration. There were about three that we wanted to replace. Instead, we're looking at replacing one this year, and then we'll see going forward for future years. Additionally, we needed to get a generator at South Tower to help cover some radio equipment in case of power failure. We want to make sure that the fire department can still continue to work, their radios continue to work. That's important, to make sure that occurs. In the Village Hall, we've got some money set aside for ADA compliance repairs. We had some set aside last year and hadn't spent it yet, so we have that continuing. We also have $7,000 for any additional security measures that we may need to happen. We've got $55,000 set aside for painting the Village Hall, and then $10,000 for a fence near the Village Hall alley. At the Police Department, we've got a carryover of carpet for second floor and in records of about $10,000. That's a purchase that you guys had approved at their last Village Board meeting. We had it budgeted in this year. We got a portion of that carpet replaced. We've got a little bit that's carrying forward into next year. As you saw, we had the paint of the stairwell, you saw that on the tour, and then you also saw on the tour the fence that we have at the detention basin at Police. We're looking, we've got in here $20,000 will cover repairs on the south side of the fence and then replacing the fence on the north side. If we decide we want to move in that direction, we've got the money set aside in the budget. For public works buildings, we've got garage doors being replaced. We've got a fence replacement at the northeast corner of the Streets Division. We've got a above-ground vehicle lift, that's something else you saw on the tour, the need for the lift. They've got a request in here for a root pruner. We've got $50,000 for tree box outlets to be able to have electricity near some of the other trees in the downtown business district to be able to potentially do some additional decorations and lights there. We've got $50,000 for gateway and wayfinding signs. We've got, in IT, we've got the UPS replacement at the Police Department for the server room. We talked about that on the tour as well. And then they've got some server replacements, as you saw on the tour, with the virtualization that we've got. We were able to save significant amounts of money, of money with the servers and conserve space, but they're at the age that we need to replace them this year, so we do need to have those replacements. We've also got Deer Creek Basin repairs for $25,000, which is a carryover, and then our $90,000 that we transfer from the Capital Fund to help cover our bond debt. In the Stormwater Fund, we've got several projects that we've got listed here. We've got some engineering for Norfolk and Linden Detention, some for the Naperville and Warwick, and some for Richmond and Grant. We've got some money coming in for sewer jetting and stormwater ditch grading. As you'll recall, last year we had about $45,000 of that money in the general fund. We have moved some of those to the Stormwater Fund because that's a better place for them, but we at the same time have then decided to transfer the money that we used to spend in the general fund to the Stormwater Fund so that we're not simply moving money out of the general fund and using the, we don't want to have there be any appearance that the sales tax that was generated to be able to cover stormwater is in any way replacing what we currently did with stormwater. We want to make sure that it's an increase to what we were doing with stormwater. So the amount of money we're currently spending in the general fund for stormwater will continue. It'll just be transferred to the Stormwater Fund. We also have our rear yard drainage improvements. We've got $18,000 for monitoring the 60th Stream Bank stabilization project, and then we've got some construction costs for the Naperville and Warwick, Norfolk and Linden, Naperville and Warwick. Sorry. We've got land acquisition for Naperville and Warwick, and then construction costs for Norfolk and Linden, Naperville and Warwick, and the Benenford Basin restoration.
Question. On the, when we did the referendum, what are you anticipating the annual income from that's going to be?
Right about 1.2, 1.3 million.
Okay, and are we just going to continue on from this point to spending that 1.2, or are we still going to, at some point, want to talk about that we want to finance some of that, or is that coming up later?
Well, we are looking into it. We don't have a conclusion now. So some of this engineering will be.
Done.
What's the value that we can start quickly, and then maybe a bond would be appropriate?
Okay, so that'll be something that we can open up for discussion at some point.
I think staff's planning to make a presentation to show annual income and what can be borrowed to pay the debt service back.
And make a couple of projects be over with. You know, I'd like to get a couple done, but, but the question is what makes the most sense? So doing the engineering, I think I completely understand, you gotta do that anyway. So that's what we're doing. Okay, thank you.
And this calendar year, we're limited in the amount of tax-free debt we can issue. We have a developer's bond that's going to be issued presumably this year. As you're aware, we had an agreement with Mariano's that once they opened, we would be issuing a developer's bond with them that's tax-free debt. And so that would be where we would be officially committing to pay them back approximately $3 million for the costs, which they already paid. So they paid the costs for public improvements in the TIF area that we could have paid, and we're going to be reimbursing them over time, assuming that their business continues and goes well. As we get the money, we'll be paying them back the money. But that is involved, that involves issuing a developer's note, which commits some of our money. We also, at the last board meeting, passed an ordinance authorizing a contract to lease a fire department vehicle, which is about $1 million, which also goes towards our tax.
Oh, that goes that debt, okay.
It's also tax-free debt.
All right.
So we're limited this year. We could probably still do about a $5 million bond if we wanted to this year, or we could wait till the next year and do a little bit larger bond if we needed to.
That makes sense. Thank you.
So right now, we're just, you know, when we looked at the projects, we wanted to get done immediately. It seems like we've got the money on hand from this year and next year.
Didn't realize the lease counted against that, but yeah, it would, wouldn't it?
Yep, it does.
If you remember the $10 million bond we took out, we're pledging $780,000 in principal and interest for 20 years out of the budget. So whatever bond we take out has to come out of that 1.2 million annually.
Yeah. No, I understand that, but I also, but I, it's also the amount of debt that we can do from a tax-free standpoint and, you know.
It's kept.
Okay.
Yep, so we'll get a better rate if we can do it all tax-free.
Sure, absolutely.
The next section covers items in our motor fuel tax fund, which is, we've got some engineering for Pasquale and Austin.
Can I stop you again?
Sure.
Because, Steve, you brought something up the other day, because you went to that one meeting about the chance for developers. It's right. Should that be in the budget? Does something like a pass-through grant like that have to be in the budget so that the grants could be approved and then passed on to people who do the green initiative um, initiative or, or the stormwater, you know, they up their costs when they do that and they can apply to get part of that money back?
So, typically, if we've got things that are conceptual things that we might be able to get grants for, what we'll do, so i, if we think there's a good likelihood we're going to get it and we know exactly what we're applying for and think we're going to be getting it, we'll typically include that in the budget. If it's items that we're kind of saying, you know what, there might be something out there, we want to look into it, then we won't typically budget for it. We'll work that into the appropriations ordinance to make sure if we do get that grant, we can do it, but we'll typically not include it in the budget when it's, at this point, something that we know we want to look into but don't have any further numbers on.
Revenue in and the same amount out, so it's...
That's basically what it is, but I wanted to be sure that somewhere we address it because if, in fact, we make that available, and it should be, again, that might be, that's a nice cookie to give to someone who's coming in as a developer to say, hey, do the, do the, um, like, like they did at Bria, you know, or, or at Burgess Square, you know, do the, do the parking lot pavers, do the, uh, do the, the special gardens to do the stormwater, and now there's grant money available to you to get part of that reimbursed. So, I would hate to not have those available down the road if, if that opportunity is there for developers.
Do we have anybody that can write grants on that?
I don't know.
Because that's, that's a big part of it, too. It's not just getting, not just saying that we want the money, but actually being able to go out and get it.
I mean, if we had one or two, I'm sure we could manage just for the people, just because the lady at the EPA practically said she'll spoon-feed us what we need to write.
Yeah.
Uh, and I did send the information to the mayor and the manager that kind of showcased everything. It was a pretty lengthy presentation. I don't know if we'll be able to let developers take advantage of that directly. I don't know how that works.
I only read it quickly when you sent it to me, but I, I think it is for our improvements.
Just for the village improvements.
Okay.
But maybe there's some way to work it out. I'm not sure.
But, but again, even if we were to do something with, with some of that information, there is availability, so I don't want to miss out on that.
Yeah, right. The money's there, let's go for it.
Yeah, yeah, you...
Great idea. We'll make sure we include that in the appropriations.
Okay. Thank you.
So, we've got the past, so we've got, again, if there's carryover items, I'm not going to go into them in a lot of detail, but we've got some money set aside for, some engineering for Willmet. We've also got some money set aside for engineering for West Quincy Street parking improvements. We've got the constructions for Willmet that we were hoping to do $700,000 under the typical method and probably another $700,000 cost to do it in the green infrastructure. Unfortunately, we don't have the money to do all of that right now. We're hoping to, you know, postpone that project for a little bit and be able to work on that in another year when we do have some additional funds for that. We've got our costs for Pasquenelli, Ogden construction from IDOT. It's something that we've carried over prior years, carrying it over again. We have $250,000 that we're setting aside for MFT resurfacing. We'll probably be doing that to help cover some of, once we get to water, we'll talk about some of the water main replacements we're doing. We'll probably use that to help cover some of the water main replacements we're doing in Richmond. And then we've got our transfer to the debt for bonds. In the water fund, we've got the replacement of a couple of different vehicles. We've got, we had a request for a booster pump in the south part of town for $130,000. This would be something that would help some of the residents in the south part of town have a little bit higher water pressure. It's something that we would like to do and would have liked to include it. As we get to, into the water, you'll see a little bit more as we talk about the water fund balances. We didn't feel it was something we could put in this year's budget, and so we've unfortunately had to hold off on that. We have an alarm system, about $3,700. We've got shoring for about $8,500. We've got the general wage adjustment agreed upon increases in the water portion is almost We talked a little bit about the Richmond water main, and so we've got some money in there, some money that was a carryover, $75,000 from last time. We're using that, a new $100,000 for phase three engineering, and then $800,000 for construction. We've got $125,000 for the Southfield Gardens. That's taking over that water main. I think there's been discussion at that at prior public works committee. We've got some money set aside as carryovers for the, that we're continuing from prior years for the North Water Tower cathodic protection, flow control valve, the final coat on the garage floor at Water. I think that's something we also saw on the tour. Want to make sure you're aware that that is, and there's a carryover from the budget. And carpeting the front offices and then also planting some trees along the railroad right-of-way to try to improve that corridor a little bit as well.
Just along the frontage where the water division is, I mean, it wouldn't normally be separated out except that it's water fund expense.
Okay.
Let me throw another one, and, and I think we kind of skipped where I'm coming from. But this year, we've budgeted the last of the funds that are going in for street repair that we got from the bond.
Last of all the $10 million street and infrastructure.
So, when that's all completed, this, now this may fall into a question really for next year's budget, but what will we be doing? Are we going to look at then the remaining approximately 50% of the streets that, that we didn't get a chance to touch with that money to see if there's, what else we should be doing?
The, yes. And if you go far enough back, we had an annual program and we kept up pretty well with it. Manager Botch was very aggressive with it, and it was a great program. Then, for all reasons that, like everything else with the economy, we fell behind, and then when stuff starts falling apart, it starts falling apart at an exponential rate. Not, you know, waiting one year is not just waiting one year. The problem multiplies. So, the bond was to catch back up to a normal level of service, you know, across the whole community.
So, what you're saying is now that we're there, we can do a little bit of...
With our regular MFT program, we can keep up.
Stay caught up. And these were the...
Oh, we stay caught up, okay.
These 50% was underneath, or these...
Yes.
Underneath the, what percent?
We, we used 70 as a, as a base. I mean, it was, it was 100-point scale, so...
These were under 70 points.
Yeah.
I think a lot of them were under 50. At this point, is there any questions? You're, you're on a roll now, Spencer. I've got a couple, real quick ones.
Yeah, he hasn't stopped talking. Thought it was me.
Going back to public works, it's only $8,000. I know it's a small-ticket item, but grassy dirt and mulch for the Emerald Ashbore trees. Just a, why don't we use the hydrocedar for this? It may just be because of manpower, but isn't that easier?
We do it, it would, it would apply to that. I mean, it's, it's...
Is that just a material floor?
It should just say restoration, but whether, whether it's a, you know, a slurry with the hydrocedar or they do it by hand.
So, okay.
Just the tree, you know, you grind a stump and it's a small area. It might not be worth taking out hydrocedar to do that.
I don't know how it works or anything. It's just really cool, so that's why I was wondering.
It's awesome. You just, you can spray it on a wall and it grows grass.
Yeah, right. It's amazing. The 61st Street sidewalk, is that Fairview to Williams? I know there's a couple of emails going Cumber to Fairview and...
That is Fairview to Cumber.
Fairview to Cumber, okay. And then my last one is sewer jetting. I, I brought this up, and I know I, I talked about an IGA with the county, and I just think we could do more with $30,000 if we partner with them, get a lot more of it done. So, I just wanted to remind everybody about that. The opportunity is there. I know they told it to me two or three times that we're more than willing, the machine's sitting there. Why pay a contractor and we could just cover the cost? So, that's all I got. Thank you.
Oh, anytime we can partner with anybody, it's...
Right.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on, we're going to talk a little bit about our revenue trends. So, for those in the paper packet, we're now on page 29. Those following along electronically, we are now opening a document that's C-02, 2017 revenue trends. All right, so, this shows some of our major revenues. Obviously, we can't go through every single one of our revenues, but this gives some of our high amounts of revenues. So, in sales tax, you can see we had sort of the dip in 2010 and '11, and then you can see it began increasing again. In 2015, we had about $8 million worth of sales tax. In 2016, we're projecting to get just under $8 million, so right about the same amount as we got last year. So, we're looking at moving our budget up a little bit. We want to still be under what we got this year, so we're moving it up to about $7.9 In use tax, you can see we are projected to receive about $546,000 this year. So, use tax is this, people pay the state the use tax, and then the state remits it to municipalities based on population. And so, that is approximately, we're budgeting this next year for about $540,000, and that's based on the IML's recommendation. The IML tracks how much we get per capita. They estimate that we're going to be getting $23.50 per capita. We are conservatively estimating a little bit less than that. We've had times where their estimates have come in a little bit high, and so just to be conservative, we're not going the full amount of their estimates. So, we're expecting, we're budgeting to just come in at about $540,000 for use tax. We've got income tax, which again is money that's paid to the state. The state remits a portion of their income tax to municipalities based on population. We are looking at, we're budgeting about $2.4 million, which is right about what we got this year. And you can see that's a little bit less than, so they're projecting a little bit of a drop to 102, and we're still budgeting to come in a little bit under them. So, you can see they had initially projected we'd be at 105, and we're dropping a little bit from their projections. That's why we try to be a little conservative with that. Utility tax by type, you can see our utility taxes have been going down the last few years in, and that's pretty consistent across the board, from the taxes from comm ed, from NICOR, from telecommunications tax. All of those taxes have been dropping a little bit each year. This year, NICOR was significantly down, which is not a surprise, given how mild the winter was this year. So, with all of that considered, we are reducing our budget to a little bit less than what we brought in this year. So, we brought in, we're, we're projecting that we'll get about $2.3 million, 2.2 million 377,000. So, we're budgeting about $2.35 million. Video gaming tax revenue, you can see, and this is a factor of, you know, as it began, the very first year was towards the end of the year. Not a lot of places had it. We only brought in about $24,000. Then it increased. So, this year, we're projecting that we'll get about $199,000. That green line shows where we are to date, so we've got a little bit more of the year left, and we think we'll get about $199,000. Based on that, we're budgeting about $192,000 going forward.
That's great.
Our places for eating tax, you can see, has also been increasing a little bit, and so that's, that's good. It's a good sign that our economy is improving and doing better with regards to that. We expect to be bringing in just about $1 million next year, places for eating. Our hotel motel...
Spencer, this all goes to stormwater there.
I'm sorry, what?
The places for eating, where does that go?
No, that, a portion of that goes to the general fund, a portion goes to pay for the bond, for the motor fuel tax bond.
Okay.
Stormwater had its separate increment.
So, yeah, that's right.
Essentially, 75% of that goes to our annual debt retirement on the, on the bond.
The next revenue chart is our hotel motel tax revenue, and you can see this has kind of been up and down. You can see it dropped a little bit initially, you know, the early years picked up again, dropped again after 2008, slowly started picking up again, dropped a little bit in 2014 and '15 as the hotel was going through some transitions, and then we're projecting to get about $704,000 this year. We are conservatively estimating about $640,000, so that's close. It's higher than what we got the last couple of years, but a little bit less than what we got last year. So, we're just trying to be conservative until we get a good handle on how the hotel revenues are going. We want to make sure we're conservative with that.
And Spencer, this is the, the amount of money that was affected when we lost home rule, and it went back to only promoting tourism in the community.
Right. Yes. Yes. So, when we were a home rule municipality, we could use all this money for any purposes that the village determined. As non-home rule community now, we can only use it for convention and tourism to promote people coming to visit the village. The next chart shows our motor fuel tax revenues. As we talked about, this is the money that the state remits to us. We are, again, basing our figures on estimates from IML, from their per capita estimate, but at this point, we're projecting to get about $614,000, and we are budgeting about $600,000 for motor fuel. A portion of that, as we talked about, has to go to repay the bond, and then anything beyond that is able to be used for what motor fuel tax needs we have, so what road resurfacing or road improvement needs that we have.
Any questions on the revenue? Yes.
Has the village ever looked into doing its own gas tax?
The village did a, its own gasoline tax when they were, when we were home rule. Unfortunately, as non-home rule municipalities, we're not able to do that. So, we had one for a while, but then it ended when we became not home rule.
Yes.
Well, maybe you could just give a brief overview on how is, I don't know how the state budget still may, has really impacted our revenue. So, are they still paying us? Are, I guess I just am not clear. I don't know that.
Good question. You mean as far as what, yeah.
So, so the state budget impasse for a, for the first part of the fiscal year, they were making some payments but holding off on other payments. So, our motor fuel tax was one that for the first several months of the year, they did not pay us, and we had to just utilize our reserves for anything we wanted to do with those. The...
Eventually got it.
Eventually got it, yes. Video gaming tax was also one of those where they were holding the money back but not paying us. Then they did release that money, so now we are currently getting motor fuel tax and our video gaming tax. The big fear is the local government distributive fund or the income tax. There's, there were talks last year about significantly cutting that, perhaps cutting it in half.
Explain what that is.
And so, as you saw, I'm pulling it up right now, the income tax page, you can see right there, and for people following along on paper, income tax is on page 32. So, our income tax, we get about $2.4 million from the state each year for income tax. That's something that years ago, the state said, okay, municipalities, you can't issue your own income tax. Instead, we'll give you a portion of our income tax and spread it out to communities based on their population. And so, this past year during the budget discussion, there was talk about saying, well, maybe the amount that we've been historically giving to municipalities could be cut back, and we could say, we're only going to give you half of what we had been giving you. And so, that would be, in our case, a reduction of about $1.2 million. They have been giving it to us while they're deciding whether or not they want to give it to us. At the moment, there's been less talk about not giving it to us this year, but it's one of the...
We don't understand anything that's happening.
Yeah, it's one of those situations where until they have a budget figured out, we're hesitant to assume that we're going to continue to get it. And so, it's one of those, we're just up in the air right now, waiting to see what they do. So, we're kind of preparing our what-if scenarios and trying to think about what will we do if anything does happen, and that's also why we want to make sure we keep an additional buffer in case they do decide to pull some of our revenue. But right now, we are getting all the revenue that they should be giving us. We'll see if that, what happens at the beginning of their next fiscal year.
And you're budgeting that to continue?
We're budgeting that to continue right now until we find out differently.
Unlike, unlike last year, when we were at this point last year, there was, we were really afraid that we were going to eliminate half of that. So, we basically did two separate little budgets. We held off some items equivalent to that 1.2 million we thought we were going to lose until September or October, until we found out that we were going to get the money. So, it was like two separate little budgets within a big one.
And I'll, I'll still do that this year. I mean, we'll, we'll, once we have an approved budget, that will also be, these one-time I mean, we'll, once we have an approved budget, that will also be, these one-time expenses, for example, will be looked at to see which ones.
Spencer's $500,000.
Have to be purchased, and that will be very late in the year if at all.
Well, I think the real, I serve on legislative committee for DuPage Mayor's and Managers Conference. The real question is whether there ever will be a budget during this term of, of our current governor. There's speculation that while he's governor, unless somebody blinks, you may not have a budget for two or three years. That's speculation, but that's what they're saying. Now, on the other side of the street, tomorrow, if these folks down there decide to get together and work out a deal, you could have a budget tomorrow, and they could decide that, that the revenue sharing is gone. So that's where we're at. I mean, we don't know any more than I think they know, to be honest with you, but it's, let's just say it's, the meetings that I go to for the last six months have been more than a little interesting. When you hear people from Springfield who tell you what Springfield is like right now? So I wish I gave you a better answer, but there isn't one.
No, I, I, I understand that. I just was curious how we're managing to budget for that.
I, I truly believe we'll, we will not lose all of the revenue sharing based on comments that have been made by some of our legislators, especially those from around here in DuPage County. We're probably going to lose some.
And, and like we said, some of the bigger ticket items will hold off on until we know for sure, like $500,000 for the software. We'll wait, because if we don't get that money, then we, we'll just hold off another year probably on that.
We take a five-minute break and go get something to drink.
Any more? You need a break?
Yeah, I want to go get something to drink. I've been talking.
You know what? We could take, we'll take a quick five-minute recess. If somebody wants to go get something to drink or eat, and we'll come right back, and we'll let Spencer regroup. the 2016-2017 fiscal year, and again, turn it over to Finance Director Parker.
Okay. So I want to quickly talk about transfers. I think we've had a lot of discussions about them previously, but walk through each of them briefly, and if you're in electronically, it's the file labeled CO3, Transfers Overview. If you're on the paper copy, we're starting on page 39. So this shows the debt payment. As you recall, I mentioned money coming from the debt, to pay the debt for the bonds. You can see the different funds that it comes from. You can also see, General Fund also has an extra $250,000 for the developer's note this year. This next slide shows the general fund transfers. You can see it's kind of busy and complicated. You can see the money that the general fund pays to Fund 68, the money 68 pays to the general fund. We typically have $124,000 that we have given to capital the last several years that match the amount that they got from our gas tax. Now there's an extra 1.4 million this year. You can see our money to Stormwater, you can see to the debt, and you can see our amounts to the Vehicle Replacement Fund. So that covers the transfers, the money moving around, kind of visually instead of just in a chart. Right. So moving on to C-04, the Transfers Program Summary. So this shows a lot of the same information in the chart form in the program summaries. Just as a brief introduction to people who may be less familiar with the program summaries, the way this is typically set up is you've got the columns, A, B, C, D, and E. The items in blue are just basic from last year's. The green items are changes that we're including for this year. The red items are things that are not being included for this year. On the far right, you can see the total amount that includes what it was previously and the new amount. So that's the same thing that you'll see throughout all these charts going forward, and you can see those transfers that we just talked about. So you can see the transfer to capital includes what we typically have, the 124, 1.149 million that came from our balance that are above our one-time expenditures we have in general fund, and then another 279,000 that comes from our operating revenues for the general fund that we could be spending on operating costs, but this year we're taking it to spend towards capital. So it's even, we're taking even some of the money we get on an ongoing basis and using it for one-time expenditures, which is, means we're in good financial position. Right, so one of those specific transfers was the Vehicle Replacement Program, CO5, or starting on page 43 goes into that in a little bit more detail. You can see in here, and I'm not going to read all of these, but you can see the different vehicles that we have, the amounts we're putting into them. I'll just cover a couple of highlights. One of the items you can see in there is we've got an extra $40,000 in there in converting the ladder truck to a Quint lease. As you know, we talked about this at prior meetings, and we're able to get the vehicle updated more frequently, save a lot of money on repairs by doing it as a lease as opposed to buying it outright. We're also cutting down in the amount of pumper. So previously, we'd had four pumpers. We're going down to three now, and doing one that covers both a ladder and a pumper. So that saves us significant amounts of money from your, from prior years.
Let me throw a question at you.
Sure.
The lease that we're going to do on the Quint is for, what, seven years?
Yes.
Are we still going to set aside money for what happens, say, 10 years from now, about, for the, for replacing that ladder truck? Or have we got money that's in there that we can just let?
Yeah, so we have money that we had set aside to purchase a ladder truck.
To purchase, yeah.
It wasn't enough to purchase a ladder truck yet, but it's about the right amount to purchase a Quint. We're going to be leaving that in there in case in seven years we decide we want to do something different than continuing the lease program.
So the lease payment we'll budget, and then the rest of the money we'll just let sit until the next time.
That's correct.
Which, as the mayor was kind enough to say, I can explain that 10 years from now. Thank you.
Jim will still be, yes.
You've got the police vehicles that we have, you've got the public works vehicles we have. This is the amount that we talked about with the sweeper. So on an annual basis, it costs us about $4,000, $4,000, $5,000. If we were to rent it, it costs us about $4,000, $5,000 extra that we'd be putting aside to fund it, to have the higher-cost sweeper. Based on that, I think my recommendation would be to get the higher-cost sweeper, just put aside a little bit more money each year in the V, our Vehicle Replacement Program. That way, if we need to use it more than once a month, we have the ability to do that if we get more previous streets going forward. So that's kind of, would be my recommendation, but if you'd prefer to get the lower-cost equipment now, that's fine. And then, so that covers the annual costs. So each year we're setting aside, this year we're setting aside $865,000 from the general operating funds to go to our Vehicle Replacement Program. The next page, so if you're on the computer, it's DO1. If you're following along on the paper, then it's simply the next page on 46. That shows us what we're actually buying, which vehicles we're actually buying this year. So we are buying three patrol squads. As you'll recall, when this program started a few years ago, we were getting six squads a year, and then we moved it down to five, and then four. Now it's down to three from last year. We're continuing at the three squads per year. But again, it's, you know, significant decrease from what it was previously, and then we've got the costs. So what we do is we take our squads and continue use. We have that cost in there. We are postponing some non, non, sorry, non-squad, so police vehicles that are not squad cars, we're, we've got them up for replacement. They don't need to be replaced this year. Last year, we had one that we postponed. We're going to be doing that one this year. Another few that are up for replacement can still be held off. We're going to hold off for those for another year to see how they're doing. Similarly, with the fire department, we have an SUV that's up for replacement. We are going to be replacing. There's another couple that we are postponing to a future year.
Since I got started on that Quint thing with the lease, is there a market for leasing police cars? Does that help our cash flow?
I, I mean, we could look into it. I don't know that it would, because with the police cars, we are about the three police cars each year, so we've got a pretty good set amount that we can pay each year without having to pay any interest costs.
I can't imagine it would be productive anyway.
Okay.
With fire, there's a value to a piece of equipment even to a, a smaller department somewhere, whereas, you know.
Well, because of the Quint gives us, there's a, there's a longevity factor there. That makes some sense with the police car, three years. I didn't know if three years makes any sense. But again, with all the talk we just had about Springfield and what may happen, I'm just asking from a cash flow standpoint if there was any, any, any savings.
If you lease.
No, you can't talk.
If you lease those vehicles, then you have no ability to pass them down.
Chief Mulholland would like to be, would like to be recognized.
Bruce just said it. Trustee Barker just said it. If you lease, you don't have the opportunity to pass it down to other departments.
Oh, that's true. That's right. You know what? That's exactly right. Yeah, thank you, Bruce.
And when we had, we had done the analysis about a year ago to say, is it cheaper to just buy new cars instead of passing them down, hold squad cars, squad cars a little bit longer? And we found it's, the way we do it is continued use, and passing them down is the cheapest
I'd like to go back after our short recess and continue with the budget workshop for
way to do it. So we like to do it that way. It's a good.
That makes sense.
Effective way to save.
Because you're right, if you lease, then you don't have them to move along.
What, how many years does the PD keep a squad car before you pass it to another department? Generally, just, I'd like a estimate, is it three years, four years?
Right about four years.
About three years?
It used to be three, isn't it four?
Yeah.
It used to be two. It's closer to four now.
Yeah.
Isn't it four?
Yeah, it's right about four.
We have, I believe it's 12 vehicles, three, so every four years. By four years, we'll have every, every, every 12 years, you'll have a complete new fleet, but every four years.
Okay.
And we extended that. It was, and the staff was just saying, two, three years? Now we comfortable with a four-year.
Mayor, correct. Every year, with the budget crunches, we've been extending it, buying less and extending more.
Well, and whether we keep it at the three years, like we've been doing, or when we extend it out even farther down the road, is going to base a lot on having the, the SUVs for the next couple of years and see what kind of maintenance you start putting into them. You know, the new ones now, it don't matter. They're going to run, but after you've got three or four years of hard driving on them, are they going to the repair shop a lot?
And they're designed for longer use as well, too. So that's probably, we're, we're in a, kind of like an experimental period.
Yeah.
But then again, to what our extended use, when the fire department or streets or whoever gets these vehicles, and there's a high demand because of the SUVs, everyone wants them, they'll be here a lot longer and their costs will be less.
So we're hopeful we can keep it to every four years. As I said, that's something we tried at the budget time, and we don't know because they're all newer than four years. So as we get there, we'll see, we may need to up it, you know, bring it back to three years sometime in the future, but right now, we're sticking with the four. Team's okay at the moment.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, and then you can see that sweeper there, instead of $213,000 for a new sweeper, we'd be doing $263,000 for a previous concrete sweeper. So it's an extra $50,000 we're paying this year, and then putting aside an extra $4,000, $5,000 each year in the future to cover it. Okay. No question on that. Diving into revenues, so some of the more details on revenue, we covered a lot of these in revenue trends. The next page, so online, it's DO2. If you're looking on paper, it's, I think we're starting on 47. So it's even, we're taking even some of the money we get on an ongoing basis and using it for one-time expenditures, which is, means we're in good financial position. Right, so one of those specific transfers was the vehicle replacement program, CO5, or starting on page 43 goes into that in a little bit more detail. You can see in here, and I'm not going to read all of these, but you can see the different vehicles that we have, the amounts we're putting into them. I'll just cover a couple of highlights. One of the items you can see in there is we've got an extra $40,000 in there in converting the ladder truck to a Quint lease. As you know, we talked about this at prior meetings, and we're able to get the vehicle updated more frequently, save a lot of money on repairs by doing it as a lease as opposed to buying it outright. We're also cutting down in the amount of pumper. So previously, we'd had four pumpers, we're going down to three now, and doing one that covers both a ladder and a pumper. So that saves us significant amounts of money from your, from prior years.
Let me throw a question at you.
Sure.
The lease that we're going to do on the Quint is for, what, seven years?
Yes.
Are we still going to set aside money for what happens, say, 10 years from now, about, for the, for replacing that ladder truck? Or have we got money that's in there that we can just let?
Yeah, so we have money that we had set aside to purchase a ladder truck.
To purchase, yeah.
It wasn't enough to purchase a ladder truck yet, but it's about the right amount to purchase a Quint. We're going to be leaving that in there in case, in seven years, we decide we want to do something different than continuing the lease program.
So the lease payment will budget, and then the rest of the money we'll just let sit until the next time.
That's correct.
Which, as the mayor was kind enough to say, I can explain that 10 years from now. Thank you.
Jim will still be, yes.
You've got the police vehicles that we have, you've got the public works vehicles we have. This is the amount that we talked about with the sweeper. So on an annual basis, it costs us about $4,000, $4,000, $5,000. If we were to rent it, it costs us about $4,000, $5,000 extra that we'd be putting aside to fund it, to have the higher-cost sweeper. Based on that, I think my recommendation would be to get the higher-cost sweeper, just put aside a little bit more money each year in the vehicle replacement program. That way, if we need to use it more than once a month, we have the ability to do that if we get more previous streets going forward. So that's kind of, would be my recommendation, but if you'd prefer to get the lower-cost equipment now, that's fine. And then, so that covers the annual costs. So each year, we're setting aside, this year, we're setting aside $865,000 from the general operating funds to go to our vehicle replacement program. The next page, so if you're on the computer, it's DO1. If you're following along on the paper, then it's simply the next page on 46. That shows us what we're actually buying, which vehicles we're actually buying this year. So we are buying three patrol squads. As you'll recall, when this program started a few years ago, we were getting six squads a year, and then we moved it down to five, and then four. Now it's down to three from last year. We're continuing at the three squads per year. But again, it's, you know, significant decrease from what it was previously. And then we've got the costs. So what we do is we take our squads and continue use, we have that cost in there. We are postponing some non, non, sorry, non-squad, so police vehicles that are not squad cars, we're, we've got them up for replacement. They don't need to be replaced this year. Last year, we had one that we postponed. We're going to be doing that one this year. Another few that are up for replacement can still be held off. We're going to hold off for those for another year to see how they're doing. Similarly, with the fire department, we have an SUV that's up for replacement. We are going to be replacing. There's another couple that we are postponing to a future year.
Since I got started on that Quint thing with the lease, is there a market for leasing police cars? Does that help our cash flow?
I mean, we could look into it. I don't know that it would, because with the police cars, we are about the three police cars each year, so we've got a pretty good set amount that we can pay each year without having to pay any interest costs.
I can't imagine it would be productive anyway.
Okay.
Because with fire, there's a value to a piece of equipment even to a smaller department somewhere, whereas, you know.
Well, because of the Quint gives us, there's a, there's a longevity factor there. That makes some sense with the police car, three years. I didn't know if three years makes any sense. But again, with all the talk we just had about Springfield and what may happen, I'm just asking from a cash flow standpoint if there was any, any, any savings.
If you lease?
No, you can't talk.
If you lease those vehicles, then you have no ability to pass them down.
Chief Mulholland would like to be, would like to be recognized.
Bruce just said it, Trustee Barker just said it.
If you lease, you don't have the opportunity to pass it down to other departments.
Oh, that's true. That's right. You know what? That's exactly right. Yeah, thank you, Bruce.
And when we had, we had done the analysis about a year ago to say, is it cheaper to just buy new cars instead of passing them down, hold squad cars, squad cars a little bit longer? And we found it's, the way we do it is continued use and passing them down is the cheapest way to do it. So we like to do it that way. It's a good.
That makes sense.
Effective way to save.
Because you're right, if you lease, then you don't have them to move along.
What, how many years does the PD keep a squad car before you pass it to another department? Generally, just, I'd like a estimate, is it three years, four years?
Right about four years.
About three years?
It used to be three, isn't it four?
Yeah.
It used to be two. It's closer to four now.
Yeah.
Isn't it four?
Yeah, it's right about four.
Holy God.
We have, I believe it's 12 vehicles, three, so every four years.
Okay.
By four years, we'll have every, every, every 12 years, you'll have a complete new fleet, but every four years.
Okay.
And we extended that, it was, and the staff was just saying, two, three years? Now we comfortable with a four-year.
Mayor, correct. Every year, with the budget crunches, we've been extending it, buying less and extending more.
Well, and whether we keep it at the three years, like we've been doing, or when we extend it out even farther down the road, is going to base a lot on having the SUVs for the next couple of years and see what kind of maintenance you start putting into them. You know, the new ones now, it don't matter. They're going to run. But after you've got three or four years of hard driving on them, are they going to the repair shop a lot?
And they're designed for longer use as well, too. So that's probably, we're, we're in a, kind of like an experimental period.
Yeah.
But then again, to what our extended use, when the fire department or streets or whoever gets these vehicles, and there's a high demand because of the SUVs, everyone wants them, they'll be here a lot longer and their costs will be less.
Yeah, so we're hopeful we can keep it to every four years. As I said, that's something we tried at the budget time, and we don't know because they're all newer than four years. So as we get there, we'll see, we may need to up it, you know, bring it back to three years sometime in the future, but right now, we're sticking with the four.
Yeah.
Team's okay at the moment.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, and then you can see that sweeper there, instead of $213,000 for a new sweeper, we'd be doing $263,000 for a previous concrete sweeper. So it's an extra $50,000 we're paying this year, and then putting aside an extra $4,000, $5,000 each year in the future to cover it. Okay. No question on that. Diving into revenues, so some of the more details on revenue, we covered a lot of these in revenue trends. The next page, so online, it's DO2. If you're looking on paper, it's, I think we're starting on 47. Where is that? 47? Yeah, 47. So we talked about a lot of these with sales tax, we've got a $512,000 increase. There was a question that I received during the break, somebody had asked, how does Mariano's figure into this? And so I just wanted to make sure that the board's aware, that $512,000 increase does include extra money for Mariano's. We're including a net, we're assuming a net increase of $100,000 in sales tax as a result of Mariano's. They have told us, we may be able to see as much as $200, $250,000 net increase. We're conservatively estimating that's $100,000. We're hesitant to plan to start spending the money until we see it for sure. We talked about income tax, we talked about utility tax. We have a new cell tower lease that we had before, so that's up a little bit.
That's a lot of money to sell.
Let's see, walking through liability, taxes are down as we've moved those, property taxes around a little bit. That kind of covers total general. I'm going to go through this quickly in the interest of time. If there's any questions, feel free to jump in. Stop, we're seeing a little bit of an increase in IT PEG fees, which is for the cable franchise fees, we're seeing a little bit of an increase in there. We're looking at a little bit increase in money we receive for financial accounting, that we get for financial accounting services. We're looking at a little bit of an increase in community development permits and fees, and that $76,000 is just based on kind of looking at actual permits and looking to say, if we didn't have some of the big permits, we've actually gotten more money than that this year, but we're saying, you know, conservatively, what if we didn't have some of those huge projects that we've had this year? What would we be looking at? And so we're thinking $76,000 is a good estimate if we have an average year without some of the big projects. Of course, we're hoping to get as many big projects as we can. That's great to get into the town, but for purposes of budgeting, we don't want to, again, commit to it and say, we're planning to spend as if we're getting large projects every year. One of the other items that we said that we would mention at budget time is the question about adjusting our permit fees. As you talked about at the last community development committee meeting, there was a discussion about adjusting permit fees, and we were asked at that time to take a look at how our permit, our proposed permit fees would compare to other communities. Nick did a fantastic job of, he was able to get some permits from other communities, actual projects, and be able to apply what we would charge versus what they charge, and was able to take a look at what they charged in terms of percentage-wise. Looking at the case study that he did, our average was about 1.9% of the cost of the project. There's where, there was one that was really low, like half of a percent, and the, but the others were, and so we're assuming there was some sort of deal cut with that specific project. But for the others, they were right around, there was a 1.9, there was a 2.1, there was a 2.2, I think there was a 1.6. So it's right around that 1.9, right? We'd be very competitive with the other communities around with moving to that change. And so in terms of budgeting, we don't think that we need to budget any sort of decrease in revenues as a result of that. We feel that what's been proposed will keep us competitive with the other communities. And as a result of that, we don't need to have any change in revenues. As you're aware, the plan is, we'd be doing the flat permit fees, the costs for smaller projects would go down, the costs for bigger projects would go up a little bit, but we'd still be competitive. And so there's no net change in revenue. So that's why you see it's a zero, but it's green.
So when does that change take effect? When the budget gets passed formally?
I think there'd have to be some actual ordinance changes done to that. Basically, the budget is saying, we're okay to not, we're not planning to cut fees even beyond that amount, we're just okay with that in terms of budgeting. But I think the next step would probably be.
Get on a board meeting.
An ordinance at a board meeting, is that right?
Yes.
And I think as long as we're all kind of in agreement, that'll be the next step. Would you have John?
Oh, yeah. Let's move it forward, yeah.
Okay.
Nice little press release on that.
All right, so police, we've already talked about the big increase in video gaming. See that going through. In fire, in terms of revenues, the main change is a fire grant. Our grant is a little bit less this year than in prior years. We also have extra money coming in as an increase, property tax levy, so we've got a little bit increase there under fire. Public works, revenue is very minimal, and we've talked quite a bit about pastors and transfers there, so we don't need to delve into that anymore. Any detailed revenue questions?
No. Explains it so.
Great job.
So moving on to some of the other details, so now we're going to be getting into the individual departments. So a lot of this information you've already seen in terms of the consideration, so I'm not going to walk through every consideration again. I'll hit a couple of points and a couple of things you'll see. So column A is exactly what it was last year, column B is what's changed within this year in the base budget submission, just kind of the moving things around in terms of program. And you can see the main change we had built in there was some increases in the duty chief program that you were aware was going to, were going to happen. And the big thing was that last year in the budget, we said, here's the duty chief program, we're putting it in one place called Fire Department Administration. This year, that was spread out to the other items. That's something you'll see when you get to each of the departments. When we had major changes in the prior year, we would build it into a single department so you could see it in one spot. But this year, as we have now reallocated all the costs to the departments, you'll see some costs going up, some departments going up, some departments going down, but a minimal net change. So in fact, you can see the total at the bottom for fire in their base budget without considering any of the additional requests that we have here, is a reduction of about $50,000 excluding any of the requests we've already considered and talked about in considerations. And then the revenues, again, are the same revenues that we've talked about before, so you can see down at the bottom, the changes in their revenue expenditures nets.
Nice.
Okay, so moving on to community development. Again, the big change that you'll see in most of these places is reorganization from prior year, because we had had one line item called reorganization, which dealt with lots of the results of the ERI in a single line item, that's now been spread throughout. The other piece that you'll notice is, we initially had, last year, we'd had the developer's note. We'd put a little bit of money in there, just in case Mariano's had started a little bit in this fiscal year, so it started a little bit. We haven't received anything from them for a developer's note. I don't think we'll have to pay it this year. We put some money in there just in case. We've moved that to the debt service fund because it makes more sense to pay for that instead of out of the community development department. It's not really part of their operating costs. And then you'll also see, one of the items in the strategic plan dealt with leadership, and so many of the departments didn't already have a program that was specifically tied to leadership. We created a new program so that it could map to the strategic plan. So you'll see the leadership program created in several departments. Some other departments already had things that tied pretty well to that strategic plan also that are not listed. Community development had that. You can see in planning and zoning, there's been no cost changes, or very minimal cost changes, a little bit increased advertising costs, but pretty consistent. You can see in the police and fire commission, again, pretty consistent in terms of costs of what we're allocating for that. The finance, again, had recategorization based on prior reorganization. You've got a lot of movement in and around, and a little bit of increase in bank fees just because of people are beginning to use credit cards a little bit more frequently, and then the leadership recategorized for strategic plan. In HR administration and legislation, again, some of that was due to reorganizations. There was a couple, a little bit of some reductions in some programs, compensation administration. The big thing was, last year, we'd had $100,000 that we put, similar to what we talked about doing for the part-time compensation this year. Last year, we did $100,000 that we said, we're sticking it in this budget for right now. Once we do the study and find out where it's needed, we'll spread that through everywhere else. So you see, that's why that got reduced by that $100,000 that year. Another change is in, under risk management, you'll see an increase in liability and workers' compensation insurance. We wanted to bring the expense side up to more closely match what we're bringing in in revenue for that, because we have to spend it for that. And then you'll see the other big change down there at the bottom in administrative services is reclassification of ASVAR services. ASVAR had done a utility audit, and we've been, we pay them about $60,000 each year as a result of the extra revenue they've generated for us. Our auditors have let us know, we need to count for that as expense. We used to just pull it out of revenue and say, we got this money from, you know, these other sources, we have to send it off to ASVAR. They've said now, we need to count it as an expense, so it's been moved into this department. Moving on to IT. You can see it's been network infrastructure. Last year, we had some projects in there that were, we don't have to redo this year, so a lot of these reductions are due to finance, due to prior projects. Got the delay in the finance software implementation that we already talked about. We've got the leadership item, and then our CCTV project was, is completed this year with the video cameras. So that project has been done. Questions there? Okay, moving on to public works facilities. Again, the majority of these changes are due to reorganization from things that have already occurred, where we now have our waters, our water supervisors working as our facilities manager, kind of coordinating, that's a portion of his salaries in that department. And the assistant village manager, a portion of his salary was in facilities last year, that's been moved to streets, to public works administration, which we'll look at in a minute. So that's, some of these changes in prior year reorg, and you can see that $121,000 difference. Those are parts of that change, as are the pulling out of prior year projects and replacing them with the new projects. So the projects we did last year, you can see coming out on the negatives, then the new projects we have to do this year are in the greens and the reds. Yes. Yes, what did I say?
Assistant Public Works Director.
Sorry. Thank you.
Had a wish list?
No, sorry. As the, when the public works director became the village manager, and we moved the water supervisor to the public works director position, and then moved the facilities manager to the assistant public works director position. Sorry, all those were mixed up in my head at once, I apologize. Thank you for that clarification.
Don't let it happen again.
I won't. Public works, yeah. We really got a promotion. Okay, public works, streets, fleet, municipal services administration, and health and sanitation. A whole bunch of stuff all put into there. Again, so we've got tree removals, you can see that's reduced because of prior year projects, tree removals and planting, some of those were done. A lot of just sort of moving around from prior year. You can see, A, under snow plowing slash removal, you've got a reduction in road salt purchase. We have a lot of salt left over from last year, we don't need to purchase as much this coming year.
Wow.
Include, administration employee includes public works director, assistant public works director, at least I typed it right, that's good. Recategorized, and then the transfers of jetting to the stormwater fund as we talked about. Onto police. Last year, they had included some Fiat equipment, we don't need to do that replacement this year. As you can see, they've got several places where they've got ERI savings, where they were able to reduce costs as a result of the ERI and have those additional savings. You've got the additional dispatch fee that's listed there, and Ruth was able to tell me at the break that it's about a 4.5% increase from the prior year. So there's police, village-wide, HR personnel issues, we've talked about a lot of these pieces. I did want to call your attention to, under the last section, employee benefits insurance. The insurance rates, at this point, we just built the costs into the budget as we were doing it, because we had to update the costs for one piece of it and didn't want to have to go back multiple times to update the costs because it was still so similar. But we wanted to call your attention to the fact and let you know that based on our current, the standard renewal rates, we would have had a $6,000 increase. And based on the union contract, there's going to be an increase in employee contributions, which would result in a savings of about $16,000. And then, so that is increasing contributions for both the PPO and HMO for the union. What is built into here right now, just as we're assuming the non-union would follow the union in terms of general wage adjustment, we would assume they'd also have to pay a higher portion of their health insurance, just as the union did. So that's what's currently built into that, is treating them the same in that regards. And then there's an additional proposal from the insurance committee that for the decreasing plans, we talked about this at a prior committee meeting, where the PPO plans are reducing in cost, and the proposal from the insurance committee is to hold the base on which employee calculations, employee contributions are calculated, hold that base constant even though the plan is decreasing. That's in discussions with the union right now. Assuming they agree, we could save about $6,400. If they don't, the insurance committee could look again at some additional cost savings of reducing plan benefits. All right, convention tourism. These are items we haven't talked about yet, so I'll go into a little bit more detail on these items. The first section of this is the Westmont Center, so as you're aware, the Westmont Center comes out of the convention tourism fund. We've got some projects from last year, most of those are carried over. The big change is, last year, we thought we'd just have to do some HVAC repair. We found out we actually need to do full replacement, so it's going to be an extra $20,000 above what we thought last year. So about $90,000 for that whole section of maintenance services and utilities, about $132,000 for Westmont Center in general. Moving on to convention tourism, we've got amounts for special events that we put aside money for that. We've got $100,000 that we had discussed previously allocating to the, towards the 100th anniversary. This is money, we had discussed the fact that we already have the money in our fund balance, and we talked about this a year or two ago, saying we want to make sure we set it aside. We're at the point now, they're starting to have expenses, so we'll stick $100,000 in here. If they spend $5,000 this year, then next year, we'll stick another $95,000 as a carryover.
This is not to be mistaken with that there's $100,000 to.
Every year.
Spend next month.
Right, $100,000 total to spend.
Over five years.
Over five years. But we wanted to list the full amount here so they can see it as it goes down each year. Not $100,000 each year.
Well, the majority of that will be spent during that year.
Yes.
21.
Yes.
But we've got some seed money that we can use from now till then.
Correct. Yes. We also are looking at, we have in here a increase in the amount of hotel motel grants, so right now, we've got $25,000 in hotel motel grants. We are looking at increasing that to 20, by another $25,000 to be a total of $50,000. Of that, $10,000 typically goes to WSEC, and then we have, we'd have the remaining $40,000 available to give out to people who request it for grants. We've done a couple of grants this year. We haven't spent the whole $25,000 this year, but we feel that as people come to know about this more, there'll be more requests for grants, and we'll be spending more of this.
Spencer, the, kind of the financial conditions, it's no more than 10% of the fund can go to anyone, grant?
Yes, so one of the things that the, we had set up during, at committee, was that we don't want to have more than 10% of the total amount go to any grant. So previously, nobody's been able to get more than $2,500. If we up this to $50,000, people would not be able to get more than $5,000. And then.
And it's still, but it's still based on actual money spent?
Yes.
It's still a percentage, isn't it?
Yes.
Up to 50%.
So we will reimburse up to 50%, up to that $5,000 limit. So if somebody has a $10,000 event, we could reimburse them $5,000. If they have a $20,000 event, we would only reimburse them $5,000.
Okay.
If they have a $1,000 event, we're only paying them $500.
And it's not anybody applies, it has to meet some certain criteria.
Right, has to increase convention tourism. It's something that goes in front of the finance committee of the village board first, based on their recommendation, then it would come to village board for award.
Good, okay. Thank you.
Last year, we had electronic signs in the budget. We got those done this year, so those are not included in this year. Should we see that reduction of $60,000?
And they're awesome.
Yeah, they are, they're great. We have some more expenses in community beautification. So, we have a banner pole. This $25,000 represents the towers to put up on either side of Cass Avenue, so we could have a banner going across Cass Avenue. And so, that would be $25,000. The other piece of the, the other $5,000 for the total of $10,000 for the aerial lift and then another $15,000 to get some additional Christmas lights for downtown, to improve the decorations downtown.
Holiday lights.
Holiday lights.
LED, right?
And then, on one of these earlier presentations, you had, you had in a $50,000 for some additional electrical outlets? That's not in here?
Yes, that's, yes, that's not, we don't have that coming out of convention tourism. We just had that in capital.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, Spencer, do you have some detail on that? Because that is a question that I have down too. It seems like a lot of money to put additional outlets in the downtown. I just don't understand the need.
Mike, do you want to come talk a little bit about that?
Yes, what was brought up in a previous board meeting, I can't, it's been a long time ago, but you guys were talking about putting lights down, in the downtown, on the, on all the trees in the downtown area.
That actually came from, it started at Holidays-
Okay.
-committee level and-
Got brought up.
-and many committees and then we talked about it.
Right, so, to do that to, instead of having extension cords stringing from the light pole to the tree, to the light pole to the tree, you would put outlets in the tree boxes that are down there right now in the village, you know, down in the downtown area. You just put an electrical outlet there and you plug them directly into the outlet. So, you wouldn't see the-
The two, the two things that concern me about the budget, one was the outlets and the other one is the brickwork down there that needs repair or replacement, but I think that was 150K.
Fifty thousand, mhm.
Is that all of it new?
Uh, it would be, I wouldn't see it to be all new. It would be resetting them and then replacing ones that are damaged, yeah.
If we're going to do the electrical work and it requires condiments, you're going to want to do that-
Right, I get it.
It has to go hand in hand, right.
But, I want the $200,000 to be a permanent fix. You know what I mean? It's not something that we do now and then we redo something down there because we're doing some other development and then it all has to come out again. So, that's what scares me about that.
Sure.
Can I throw a real curve out?
Uh-oh.
Standby.
Because I remember when we did some of this kind of work before, we went to the hotel and told them what we wanted to do and could, and I just asked them, could we use the hotel motel tax money for that purpose? Because it was beautification. They said, "Go ahead and do it."
Oh, is that back when we were a home role?
No, this goes back many, a few years ago.
Most tourism, right?
But, I mean, we asked them and they said they had no problem with it. I mean, and if there's an objection to us using that fund, that's where the objection's going to come from. So, the question would be, couldn't, you know, because I had raised the same questions and of course, the other side of the coin on the brickwork, if you're going to do one, do, are we, are we considering, and of course, that again, would be something that probably wouldn't get in place for four more years, but considering whether or not we were going to do some kind of anniversary bricks that people could buy as a fundraiser. And do you want to hold off and do it all at one time? Or, four years from now, do you just replace with the, with the, with the square bricks like we did at the 75th?
Yeah, I agree that it needs repair.
Yeah.
I, I agree with that and I don't, you know, I guess I don't have any problem with the outlets either, knowing that it's permanent, but it seems like 150K and people aren't going to notice any difference. I mean, it's just going to be-
Well, one thing to think about-
But, what it should be in the first place, you know?
Right.
It's going to be flat and it's going to be a lot-
One thing I think about too is, the reason North Cass isn't part of the MFT this year, as far as getting resurfaced, is we were going to hold off a little bit until we got closer to the 100th anniversary until we decided if you wanted to street scape the area downtown or keep it the way it is. If you want to keep it the way it is, then we'll resurface right before the 100th anniversary. That way, North Cass would look brand new for the anniversary. You know, there's a lot of things that has to get decided between now and then, how the board wants to move forward with that. So, you're right. I mean, we could just do the Christmas lights this year with the extension cords and see how that looks. And if it doesn't look very good, then we'd have to consider, you know, doing the tree boxes, you know, in the near future. Other towns do, you know, they do the extension cords. So, it just depends on your personal preference when it comes to that. You know, it looks better with the tree boxes. It looks more professional. But, other, other towns do it the other way too.
Outside of the, the Christmas lights, would we use them? Would they benefit street fair and other things like that?
Oh, definitely.
Taste of Westmont?
Oh, yeah.
Probably.
That'd be pretty.
It would help the vendors.
Well, I think absolutely would taste of Westmont because people walk up and down. So, and if you're going to do one, do them both at the same time. You know, don't do the brickwork and then tear the bricks out and put in the electric after that.
Some of the brick is getting to be a safety concern.
Yeah, yes, it is.
So, maybe we should just do them both now, but I still think we could, I think we could justify using the whole, the, the million five in the hotel motel tax money to do that.
Sure.
Yeah, it seems like a good option.
Yeah.
What's our fund balance, what you're proposing now in the hotel tax?
About a million four seven.
Mess with the reserve and everything?
Yep, okay. Yeah, a million four, so yeah, that seems like a good way to do that. Yeah, we'll definitely look into that.
Back when the promote Westmont commission, we were always clever with that money and-
You were. Many moons ago.
Then, under the revenue section for hotel motel taxes, you can see we've got a, so a couple of different pieces to this. We are looking at moving some of our special event wages out of the general fund into hotel motel. We've done a little bit of that previously. We're, one of the parts that we had left in the general fund had been the amount that we contribute or the, the cost of the wages that we did for, especially for, from the police for Taste of Westmont, because those monies were reimbursed from other entities. We're looking this year at moving all those expenses, as well as the revenues, into convention tourism, because that covers their attendance at special events, which can be covered under convention tourism. One of the things we are also looking at doing with that, so we're moving in the $21,000 worth of revenue for, primarily for Taste of Westmont, Red Wine BBQ, some of the other events that we do where the entities reimburse the village. And we're looking at doing a reduction to the WSEC of about $15,000, saying that we will cover the cost to have police officers at the Taste of Westmont. Now, there's a little bit of other pieces to this. One of the pieces is that the Westmont Auto Mile has been, it's been a little bit short in money in that they're not able to do as many of the things as they were able to contribute previously. So, they used to be able to contribute, I think it was $15,000 to the Taste of Westmont. Unfortunately, they're looking at having to pull back in their budget to be contributing, I think it's about, I think they're, they're cutting back by about $10,000. So, if they're contributing $10,000 less, we're able to get the WSEC a net increase of $5,000 by charging them $15,000 less. So, they'll get $10,000 less in revenue, $15,000 less in expense. And so, the, the thought was at this point that that makes more sense than increasing the amount that we put to the Westmont Auto Mile. We'd rather leave it the same as what we've been contributing before, based on that same formula of what we've done previously and just reduce what we charge the WSEC to be able to give them a little bit of an increase. As you're aware, they've had some additional costs, especially as regards the Thursday night events during the summer, which doesn't generate a lot of revenue. And so, they were looking for some additional assistance from the village and this is the way that we felt would be the easiest way to do it.
Instead of, instead of an extra grant, we'll just offset the stuff we're charging them.
And we've, we give 24,000 to the Auto Mile.
We do, yes.
And the Auto Mile originally was going to not only match that, but it was going to get up to how much Larry? Ian?
Well, at one point, they were, we were generating about $48,000 per year when we had initial members and they were each contributing $1,000 per member. Two or members allocated now for months.
Yeah. So, that 72,000 pot of money, including our 24, was kind of divided almost in half or so. Half went back to the community for special events and the rest was going to go to promote the Auto Mile.
Right.
So, what's happened is, all that's really left now is just the traditional special events, the fireworks, holidays, and the taste. So, we may have to, if we want to continue to support those events, just do it direct through us. If the, the Auto Mile's still good, but if they ever cease to exist, then we would probably assume those responsibilities.
Have to be something we'd look into.
You know, another thing that just popped in my head, that matrix that I told all of you about with all the different cogs and high priorities, one of the highest priority in every one of the council of governments is to take the hotel motel tax money and make it general revenue. If they ever get somebody to bring it to the table and discuss it down in Springfield, which is the biggest issue right now.
I heard that there's more of a movement to release half of that.
Yeah.
Before they do it all, is allow municipalities to have half for general purposes and the other half specifically for-
Tourism.
Tourism.
So, that, it may, it may happen, it may not happen this year, but you know, there's movement, so.
All right, Spencer. All right. Moving on to capital projects, this is just a different way of looking at all the same information that you've already seen. So, I'm not going to go into this in a lot of detail, but you can see dollar amounts and colors and everything. You see it a little bit better than just a straight chart format. So, but everything that you've got listed here is also listed on the considerations You can see the transfer coming in from the general fund there. All right, moving on to our bond funds. Again, it's very similar to what you saw before. We are looking at spending down our fund balance. We're going to be in the non-MFT fund or our infrastructure stormwater fund, we've got, we're going to be putting some of the costs towards the Linden, Norfolk and Linden design engineering. As you saw, we had that in stormwater funds. We're covering a portion of that from our stormwater bond, as well as covering the demolition from North Grant. And we think that that should help reduce the amount of those bonds and spend all of that. Okay, stormwater bond, again, you saw all of these in chart form. It's just presented here in a consistent way with the rest of the departments for your convenience and so you can see that, that way. Same with the motor fuel tax. Again, it's information you've seen before. At the bottom, you can see revenues and expenditures in net and how it's impacting our fund balance. Water department, again, you've seen all the increases. The red and green sections, over under options C through E. The other pieces that you see here, again, large pieces of the changes in program costs are due to prior reorganization. There is a reduction in the amount of cost for distribution. We've, we've been historically kind of using a set, here's how much water we consume, this is what we're going to build in for expenses. This year, we tried to chew it up a little bit more and are reducing our estimate for expenses based on the fact that we're not consuming as much water as we used to, or we, the residents aren't consuming as much. We've got a little bit of increased maintenance costs there. And then, again, we've got, so we've got some prior year project carryovers and some of those adjustments there. So, a lot of these are prior year projects come out and then we put the new ones in. So, again, you can see water main improvements, most of those come at, came, you know, the prior year projects go out and the new amounts go in. And you can see, again, we've got the booster pump that's red, Suffolk Gardens that we are doing. This also includes in the revenue section, something we discussed at a public works committee meeting, an increase in the water rate. So, we talked there, in order to make ends meet, to be able to keep up with our operating costs, we need an increase of about $663,000. And what was discussed at that committee was also, in addition to increasing the rate, there was interest in you, in a philosophical change in the way the rate is structured so that some people may see a decrease in their water bill or some people will see an increase in their water bill. Right now, we have it set to, we have a, an administration fee on top of an amount per gallon. And so, the basic idea right now being that even if you only use 1,000 gallons or less than 1,000 gallons, it still costs money to get water to your house. And so, you pay for that flat administration fee and then you pay for the amount of water you use. What that ends up doing is saying that for the first 1,000 gallons you use, you're paying a higher dollar amount than you are for the remaining 1,000, for every 1,000 gallons you use after that. So, the discussion at the committee level was that we may want to consider changing the way that that works and making it instead so that it's all the same, no matter how much water you use, each 1,000 gallons you use costs the same dollar amount. It will end up being people that use more water will end up paying a higher portion of the water rate than people that in, that use less water. But, that was the, so that was sort of the tradeoff that we had discussed.
And that, you know, the low users are seniors and things like that too, so it, it helps that.
Yeah. So, so currently, the first 1,000 gallons cost $13.72. Each 1,000 gallon after that costs $8.72. The proposed change, which was discussed at the committee, was to change it so that each 1,000 gallons costs $9.97.
Not $10.
Not quite $10.
Nine ninety-seven.
Nine ninety-seven. And then, you can see at the bottom of the chart, we've got, and this is kind of a lot of confusing numbers, so let me try to walk through this. We've tried to separate out operating versus infrastructure versus carryovers. And so, as you can see, we've got the expenses, we've got the comparison in expenses and the comparison in revenues. And then, the bottom section, you can see FY 2016, '17, revenues, expenses, and net. So, you can see, we've got revenues of about 6.5 million in operating, 6.3 million dollars worth of expenses, then $118,000 in, in net, so it'd be a surplus for the net. And then, we've got, in terms of infrastructure, a surplus of about $160,000 that we're able to put aside to save towards funding things like water towers and additional water main improvements. And then, the other expenses are the carryovers that we had already set aside in the prior year. So, all of that together, we have a estimated beginning balance of about 697,000, an estimated ending balance of about $485,000. So, as some of you are aware, in prior times, there was sort of the talk about, oh, you know, there was the thought that water had a lot of extra money and it was something that was really easy to do, a lot of these infrastructure projects. We've spent that money, we've used it on those good infrastructure projects, you know, we've done some great water main replacements, we've done a lot of that, but we have a lot of water infrastructure needs that are coming up as well. And that's why we need to look at that kind of an increase. So, that's what we're looking at right now in terms of the water fund.
And I have a question for Mike. There is nobody in town that has a lead service, is there?
Good question.
Unfortunately, there are still some. Not very many. We've replaced a lot of them with our water main replacements, but there are some older parts of town that still, they're on their side, they have lead and there's some, a few that are on both sides, on our side and their side, still has lead.
I would be interested in seeing if we could find a fund, just like we have these other grants, some kind of matching thing to make that transition and get rid of that stuff. You know, if it starts out small and people take advantage of it, at least we're getting a problem out of the community.
Yeah, we, we, you know, we test for lead and copper every three years. We do 30 houses, 15 lead, 15 copper. And we do test that every, every three years and it's been phenomenal. I, how great are, because the city of Chicago, you know, puts phosphate in the water, so it coats the pipe.
Right.
So, when we sample that lead, those lead services that we know of, there is no lead that's coming through.
That's a, a good point and that, that's, you know, an excellent concern and a worthy cause, but the older the lead services, the more of that coating that is built up and you don't get the lead leaching into the water supply. It's when you cut it and modify it and repair it that you're, you're opening that sore up, if you will, to do that. So, in some cases, it's, it's worth leaving it untouched and it's safe that way, but, but there's a lot of merit to getting them replaced and just eliminating the possibility of that.
Yeah, I'm on a problem.
And the EPA is looking into that. They, they're, they're looking to mandate that, one, if you have to do any work on any lead service, you must replace it, you can't repair it anymore. And two, they're working on trying to get a fund to help supplement the homeowner, to help them pay for their part of their service. Because we're just responsible from the main to the Buffalo Box, we're not responsible from the Buffalo Box.
There are no lead, there are no lead services on our side from the B box to the main.
There's still a few.
Couple.
There's a few, unfortunately, in the older part of town. You know, any new subdivision, no. But, anything before 1960, yeah, there, there's a chance it could have a lead service on, on both sides, but there, anything after 1960, it was all copper.
Who'd you guess, like a dozen, 50, 100?
No, it wouldn't be that many. I would say probably anywhere between 25 and 50, maybe at the most. And again, that's the older part of town, because we've done a really good job of being proactive and replacing the water mains in the old part of town first. But yeah, I mean, we could try to do a study and figure out exactly how many we had.
I was just curious. It'd be nice to know if, you know, how big of an issue we have there and how costly it would be.
It's nothing compared to other towns. We're really been, there's a lot of other towns that are a lot worse case than this.
Flint got it, probably didn't treat it, right?
Pardon me? No, they didn't, they didn't, well, one, they, they didn't add any phosphate in the first place to coat the pipes. And then when they switched to a more corrosive water, that's what started leaching the lead into the water.
Whatever coating was on there was getting eaten away.
Yeah. So it was just a mismanagement issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I do want to mention, apparently I'm done. I do want to mention something else on the water department. So there is a slight change, it's actually kind of a fairly significant change. So there's a change, you can see referenced on the screen, the very last section where we were just talking about the revenues, expenditures and net and the, breaking it out between operating infrastructure and carryovers. One of the things that kind of shows to the last minute changes we were making, the, initially, as you can see on your piece of paper, we initially had capital expenses of 140, sorry, 1,440,000, which included the 130,000 for the booster pump. Sort of at the last minute, as we kind of were looking at the balances, the estimated ending balances, we decided at this point, we couldn't recommend doing it for right now. And so we wanted to hold off on it. And at that point, on the, the piece of paper you have shows partway through the process of where we had pulled out that booster pump from the top section and said, we're not including it in our revenues, but had not yet pulled it out of this calculation for determining what was operating versus infrastructure or carryovers. So the numbers you see on the screen are the complete up to date numbers where you can see, in terms of operating, we are looking at a net deficit of $11,000 instead of the net surplus of $118,000 you see on your piece of paper. So operating wise, our revenues are just, even with the increased revenue, we're still just a little bit under our expenses for the year. Makes sense that we're a little bit under this year because we are buying some vehicles this year. We're not going to be doing that every year, but that goes to highlight the importance of the water rate increase this year, that even with that increase, we're still looking at a deficit of about $11,000 in our ongoing operating costs for water. Okay. Moving on to downtown parking fund and our excess reserve. As you can see, our downtown parking fund, we're not doing any expenditures out of it, our excess reserve, we've talked about that transfer. Revenues, we've discussed the transfers again. And the decrease under excess fund reserve balance for interest is just a chewing up of interest amounts. Then you can see the total projected balances for both of those funds, which we've kind of already covered, but it's just in that format now. The IMRF.
Does the downtown parking include the, the fees, the, for the money that people pay for the train station?
It inclu, it doesn't include the permit parking for the train station. It does include, we have, when the fund was set up, it was set up when we adopted some employer parking permits. So where downtown employers could get parking permits for their employees. Yeah, there's a couple of different places where they can park. And we set that up with the understanding that that money, as well as tickets that are specifically generated for downtown, not the permit parking tickets, but tickets for parking too long downtown or any of those things, would all go to this downtown parking fund. Generates about 2,000 a year, so, yep. Okay, the next document is the IMRF fund. You can see in there our estimated expenditures as well as revenues. The one item I want to call your attention to is labeled E, additional IMRF. So we are currently a little bit underfunded with IMRF and as you know, IMRF charges about seven and a half percent interest for being underfunded. And so we have some money in our reserves, we think now might be a good time to look at paying a little bit of that unfunded portion off. So it's sort of like, if you have some extra money and you want to start paying off your mortgage a little early to save some interest costs, that's what we're looking at doing with IMRF.
But the key is, it's in the IMRF, it can't, cannot go anywhere else.
Right, and we can't use that for anything else besides IMRF.
Right.
So now, now that we have some extra balance that we don't need for expenditures, we should use it. As you'll recall, we tried to save some extra money in case the I, ERi cost was high, it wasn't as high as we thought, so now's a good time to start paying off that unfunded amount and save the interest.
And we've been getting a quarter of a percent on our end and paying seven and a half now.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, yep. Okay, and then we've got the tiffs. And one thing that we're changing this year as compared to last year, last year, we had very high dollar amounts that we sort of put in the budget as what if we have to do a lot of stuff? And last year, when we were talking about budget time, at the time we did the budgets, we had gotten information from the camp, so one piece of it is we got information from the county where they said, oh yeah, tiff number one is based on when you record it, tiff number two is based on when you record it, here's which tiffs they are. And we said, okay, great, we set up the budget that way. Then we ended up finding out, we got some other documentation from the county that talked about which districts were in which tiff, and we said, well, the labels they told us initially were actually wrong. So we've now switched the tiffs. So tiff number one is the Southwestmont Business District tiff. Tiff number two is the Central Business District tiff. So if you're recalling from last year, the numbers are switched. And we, we're right this time. But one of the changes is instead of budgeting a lot of money for things that we don't really know yet that we're planning to do, we are, we'll still stick that in the appropriations ordinance as, just in case we decide we want to do something with those funds and we do want to go into debt with them and, you know, loan money to ourselves, but right now, we don't want to plan on spending money we don't have in the tiff funds yet. We don't have a lot of money in the tiffs. If we need to do a little bit of things, we will. So, you know, in the tiff number one, we're looking at, you know, maybe $10,000 worth of some sort of analysis, you know, this is probably where we would say, somebody would come to us with a proposal, we've got a little bit of money in the general fund to cover some of these proposals, analyses, but if there's beyond that, we could say, okay, we need some of our, you know, our consultants to be able to analyze these proposals and look at them. But we're not saying, okay, let's start saying, here's all the money we're going to spend doing stuff for a proposal that we haven't even received yet. So that's one of the differences from last year and you'll see these big drops, you know, down to more like $10,000, because that's closer to what we actually have as opposed to the 752,000 that we might spend maybe. And then you'll see a similar situation with tiff two, where last year, we budgeted 150,000. This year, we're budgeting 35,000. And this is for the Central Business District, so a portion of that is sending money back to the school. We have to pay them, a, a portion of the money we get in the tiff has to go back to the school for them to be able to using capital improvements on their school that's within the tiff district. So 25% of our revenue goes there.
Up to 15 million, right? 25% up to like 15 million?
I think so. Yeah. Yep. All right, and then debt service fund. This just shows the different pieces of our debt payment. You can see our principal and interest, as well as our developer's note for those costs and then where the transfer of the money comes from. So that's kind of the overview of where we are with the budget and what's presented in the draft budget. So I guess if there's any other questions, we may want to, I mean, if there's other questions, we talk about them, we may want to focus on kind of the considerations, see if there's any things we want to change in there. The one, I know the one thing that we got direction for, like, assume we got direction for is to look to see if we can do the outlets and possibly the brickwork out of the hotel motel taxes as opposed to out of capital projects. So we'll look into that. Is there any?
Is there, and if someone has it as they go home and start thinking about it, they just shoot you guys an email?
Sure.
But I know that I had an opportunity a couple of times, sit down with Spencer and Steve, and I cannot tell you the detailed work that went into this. And you basically have done our job, and well, it's your job, you guys are the ones doing the budget, we just look at it and, and approve it and give you direction. You basically have approached this very conservatively. You've cut out things that are, we don't need and you've lived within our income stream. So I think you've done a marvelous job. The only budget I see better than this is the Park District. This is a, really, you guys have done a marvelous job. All the departments have.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And I really thank all the departments for being frugal. That was a word that we used to use 20 years ago, isn't it? Ron, frugal?
Frugal or, or lean and mean, as Frank Vellerian used to say.
I think Frank always said frugal.
I got two more points when we're ready.
Yeah.
I just want to make them so I don't have to send an email.
No, it's good. We can hear them too.
Your time's up.
That's enough. I just want to present them in the right way, so. So the two things that I'm concerned about most, and I, and it was an excellent budget and it makes a lot of sense to me. The one thing that we just had a wonderful facilities tour last week. And I mean, I have a hard time with the 55K to paint Village Hall. When you walk through the street department and you walk through the water department and see what they have to work with over there. And at the very least, my recommendation was a cleaning service one day, two days a week in both facilities. But, you know, when we hear about the furnishings that they have in one of the facilities, that it was all found, I don't think it speaks well for us, especially when, and then the other building, they're bringing in dignitaries from other countries. And they're going to walk into that place and, you know, they got half a floor, they got some brickwork falling down and they have some other needs there. And then on top of that, they need the cleaning. So I'd like to see that found somewhere and maybe a little less painting this year over here, because this is a beautiful building and I, I believe in keeping it all up. But those other two are sorely neglected. No, paint, I would say paint what you need, paint what you need, but make sure that those people there are treated fairly. And, and it didn't look like it was fair to me. And I don't know what the other trustees, you know, trustees feel, but, um, then the other one, the other one was that I, I made a point in a conversation that I had with Jill a while ago, and maybe this is part of the transition to the part-time positions that we add in the future or whatever, but, you know, it's, and the job that I have, you know, most of the people come to the place on Saturday and Sunday. So we have to provide coverage for that. And I want to make sure that, you know, the community and the village doesn't, you know, roll up the roads Friday night at four o'clock, that we have the coverage that we need for all the things that go on continuously. Obviously, police and fire have it handled, but, you know, streets and public works and everything else, with all the events that we have and all of that, it concerns me that we're, you know, seven to three or nine to five, that we need to look beyond that, because I don't know anybody that works, except maybe bankers, you know, seven to three anymore. You know, that kind of thing. So I, I want to see that we're, you know, aware of it and we work towards that, because I think that's a real situation, especially when you have the ability to do it with part-time people to fill gaps.
I had that question.
Oh, you do it all the time.
Yeah, I know. If, if some of our part-time individuals, like in the public works department, could they work a Sunday through a Thursday? And I know, I asked that question and a lot of times it involves the crews that it takes to do certain projects. But if they were just available for special needs as far as garbage pickup or?
When I'm, it's more like, how do you maximize your coverage? How do you maximize your coverage and spread the staffing out so that you're not missing things and then things are, you know, ups and extras also, you know?
So it's just, I'm looking at Mike, but that, that was one of, when we originally, when I originally came on and said, is there a way to get two guys on a Sunday through Thursday and two guys on a Tuesday through Saturday? So on Saturdays and Sundays, wash vehicles, they could clean the shop, they can go out and do garbage.
I can just add briefly, if you go far enough back in history, we had that kind of coverage as far as the quantity of staff we have and we were significantly leaner than we were in every department than we were in that era. So weekend work is as needed and it's an overtime basis, so it's covered in that respect. But, you know, we were, even just the hours, we were talking about staggering within the same day and making days longer and you're just, you're just chopping up the small crews you already have and then you lose your, your production.
And then if you, you know, it might, if you need more people, then you got to ask for more people. You know, that's, I mean, that's the, the hard part. Because there's, you know, there's, it's all encompassing, it's seven days a week every day.
Well, how much, I mean, that's something to look at, how much we spend in overtime for non-snow Saturday and Sunday. So, and I'm not talking about the full-time guys, it would be the part-time guys, you'd look for weekend coverage if, if it didn't take away for the work crew during the week, which it probably would.
Yeah, and the staff has to figure it out. I'm just saying that it's something to look at.
On the same line that, that Bruce is bringing up, let me throw something else out as long as we're throwing things out. What would be the chance of having somebody come in and redesigning the whole street department? I mean, you've got, we must have four different kinds of buildings there, from cement block to, to a butler type building to, to others. When you drive through it, it's like driving through a maze, because you got to go this way and that way and this way and that way and around the water tower. And, and, you know, we're not talking about anything insignificant. I, I fully understand that we're talking some big money. I mean, if you were to knock that down and just start over, that's not, that's no small potatoes, Chris, that's the same thing we did here, it's the same thing we did at the police stations and the fire stations a long time ago. But sooner or later, somebody's going to have to bite that bullet. It's got to get done.
And earlier tonight, you heard about needs assessment and that's the first step of that.
Is it? Okay. Because I, I'd like to see, you know, and it might be pie in the sky for us for now, but I'd like to see if you were, if, is there a way of redesigning what's there? We have a lot of land, that's not the question. But it can be redesigned to be more efficient, can it be redesigned to have better buildings, to have the facilities that we want our employees to have, you know? I don't know, I'm just raising the question. But I think at some point in time, this board or a future board's going to have to bite that bullet. That's, that's the oldest piece of, of, of this village's infrastructure now. And sooner or later, we're going to have to change it.
Yeah, and then we had, you know, we had the conversation, staff did a great job of touring us around, but, you know, not only do we need a north water tower now, we have a problem with an existing one that we need to deal with. And again, that's all big money and you got to have a plan for that.
Yeah, that, those are not small ticket items, but at least if we have some idea of what we're talking about and if it can be done more efficiently eventually, you know.
I think that comprehensive plan is great.
Maybe we can at least start putting it on the list and start talking about it. Because I think we have to. And again, you know, I, I hate to keep talking about ancient history, but when I left here in 97, everything but the street department had either been rebuilt or redone.
There you go. You should have done it then.
That's exactly right. No, you're a thousand percent right, because it's the one thing that we did leave undone. But I mean, you know, you walked away with a sense of accomplishment because we did those things. It's got to get done sooner or later.
And it's, it's been a mess since.
No, we agree. And it's a hard place to work for the guy.
I feel so sorry for him.
And that's why, that's why, and I wrote myself a note, I, I showed it to Linda and I said, you know, do, do you just start over or do you just repair? And the question is, sooner or later, you just say, and.
And hopefully it needs.
Start it over and make it work.
And hopefully this needs study will give us some direction.
When your dad redesigned station two, that's what we did. He, the firemen told us what they needed. When we redid.
Oh, no.
Station, station one on the police department, the input came from, from the chief and the, and the policeman and the fireman, and that's what we tried to do. You know, so Mike, we're going to need a lot of input from you down the road, because I think it has to be done. I don't think there's any question. It ain't going to be free, but you know, it's got to, we got to start the process.
Any other specific, if not?
No, I'm done spending money. Don't tell Harold.
There's no board action tonight. It's basically giving staff direction, listening to their presentation and giving them some of our feelings. And just like trustee Eddington said, I, I think we all agree that if there's one facility that needs to be looked at, it's our public works. And again, going back, and I think Steve said Mariano, so that nine acre tract that that board back then was criticized for purchasing, which now, thank goodness, we had.
Amen.
For Mariano's was going to be our.
That's right, it was for public.
Public works site.
That was, that's right.
There was things in motion back then, so, and we still need to consider it, so.
A minor question really, because I didn't see it on, on Harold's table. Does he have a copy of the budget?
I will make sure I send him one. I mean, he's got access to the.
Yeah, I want to be sure that he sees it before we bone on it so that. Did they? Okay.
So with, not to cut off anybody else's questions, but if you do have questions that we don't cover tonight, you think of them, let us know, we'll incorporate any comments. Our homework you'll see at finance committee a week from tonight, but the budget is on the agenda for approval later that evening. So it seems like, you know, enough that we can solve in that one week time. I did want to reiterate, I mean, the, the compliments that went out, but. I did want to reiterate, I mean, the, the compliments that went out, but right in the beginning, Spencer, you know, identified the timeline and everything, but for staff and, you know, everybody else in the room, they all started on this essentially Thanksgiving, and a lot of hard work from Thanksgiving right up to January one, when all that has to be submitted to the Finance Department. So, the, the fact that they got to sit there mostly quietly for three hours is a testament to how well-prepared it is, and as impressive as it is that Spencer understands every line in all of those documents you saw, it's the culmination of all their work, and between Spencer and Ruth, you know, she's, you know, got a lot of good notes here, too, and is working hard on this, but it's a fantastic work on their part, and, you know, there's a, it was a good document you saw tonight.
Well, maybe we need a traveling trophy for the, for the department that did the best job of saving taxpayer money, we'd give it to the cop shop this year.
It would not go to the cop shop, it would go to finance.
Go to finance, okay.
The one who carries the hammer, Spencer and Steve, when they come in...
See, I tried, I tried, chief.
Good group effort.
The neat thing about it is, you know, three years ago, sitting here, you had all kinds of questions, and, you know, trying to understand it, wrap your head around it, and then now this year, going through this, I have a great comfort level that, you know, the staff is right on target.
That's right.
And that's, that's a good feeling, and this was a lot less painful than I thought it would be.
I told Spencer earlier, you get better every year.
Year gets better, yeah.
It's easier and better every year.
Like a feature film.
It's true. Jenny, Jenny probably remembers this, I know, Marie, you'll remember this, too, you go back in the early seventies, and the village board at that time used to sit here on village board night, not here, but in the old building, and decide what bills to pay and not to pay.
Oh, my gosh.
That's how bad the cash flow was.
Wow.
They had the box of bills, and they just went through them one at a time, say, "Yeah, we better pay that one, no, we can't pay this one." We have come a long way.
Yeah, you know, I think it's very productive tonight, and I appreciate, and again, we thank the staff, but we do have to go into executive session, and I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the executive session, to discuss the possible sale of property by the village pursuant to Section Two C five of the Open Meetings Act, and to discuss specific employee compensation pursuant to Section Two C one of the Open Meetings Act. Do I have a motion?
Motion by Addington to go into executive session with what you said.
Second, my little... Most of my main second, adjourn the executive session for the reasons that I mentioned before. Roll call, please.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.